All right, it is 7:03 by my time. I'm going to call the meeting for order. This meeting of the Denville Township Board of Education is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this meeting is provided to the Daily Record. And with the Star Ledger in Morris County has been delivered to the township clerk and has been posted on the bulletin board, I'm sorry, the bulletin board of the Board of Education office and at each of the school buildings in the district. Ball call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Deluna?
Here.
Mr. Luer?
Here.
Mrs. Lindsay? Mr. Cass?
Here.
Mr. Papaloni?
Mr. Capella?
Here.
As we have a need for executive session, Mr. Luer, would you care to move us into executive session tonight?
I would like to move to convene an executive session in accordance with Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this closed session will be to discuss personnel. What else?
Legal negotiations.
Legal and negotiations. Minutes of this session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Ball in favor?
Yea.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Seeing none, we are in executive session at 7:05 PM. Back in public session, and we are going to have the pledge of allegiance now. If anyone would please rise. Flag is back here. I see we have two flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, tonight, we have board goal-setting, and we have a special presentation from Charlene Peterson.
I don't have it.
You have my mic. Thank you. So, whenever you're ready, we can get started.
[inaudible]
Yeah, right to get picked up, or you can...
You can walk with the mic.
Handheld, yeah.
That way, you can see yourself on YouTube later.
We have like 500.
You're made of nervousness.
More often than not, these are becoming televised rather than not, so it's, don't even think about it anymore. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. So, I'm going to do a couple things. One of them is to take you through, kind of, like, what the community, what they will experience as part of the strategic planning process, so that you'll have a clearer sense of how that will all work. And then, I have your board self-evaluation, you know, the results of that. I think that it was emailed to most of you today, but I have a hard copy for us to look at and review. And then, also, to go through goal-setting, both district goal-setting and board goal-setting. So, having said all of that, we'll go ahead and get started. So, the strategic planning process always starts, you know, it's three meetings that we have with the community, and all of the meetings start out with, kind of, a basic definition of what strategic planning is, just so that it helps all of the stakeholders that are here, help them understand that we are all working together to advance student achievement. So, wanting to make sure that, you know, it's clear to everyone that that's why we're here, that that's the most important thing that we're doing. And as we take them through the process, we'll tell them that they're basically here to help the board answer three basic questions. Where are we now? Where is the district now? Where do we want to be five years from now? And then, what's the roadmap? They're going to help us develop the roadmap as to how we're going to get there. Help them understand, you know, why the board decided to undertake strategic planning, understanding that it is important to get the voice of the community, but not only their voice is important, but also the fact that now, you know, because your resources are so much more limited, that as a board, you really have to be forward-thinking, you have to be creative, you have to look at new ways to do things, and, you know, you need the input of your community to help you do that. Like I said, it gives you that five-year roadmap, but then, it also, you know, each year, then, you will take that step back, look and see where you are, and, you know, keep it going as like a living, breathing document that will help move the district forward. So, it's kind of a pyramid that we take the community through. Like I said, it's a series of three meetings, so that first meeting of determining where we are now, is kind of that information that the community receives, which is a state-of-the-district report that's provided by the superintendent. Then, we ask the community to identify strengths and challenges, then the second, so that's kind of answering that question, where are we now in meeting one? Then, meeting two will be that vision, where do you want to be five years from now? And then, meeting three is writing the goals and objectives as a result of the work from meetings one and two, and then, the administration writes the action plans. So, we're involving the community in the part of the process that is the what? What is it that we want to see accomplished in the next five years? And then, leave the how to the administration as to how, then, we're going to accomplish that what that the community has helped us identify. As we're looking at a calendar here of how the pieces might all fit together, you know, we would, assuming, you know, we got started, we would have, kind of, an initial planning meeting, and then, usually, take, you know, some time, then, you usually need at least a month to, kind of, figure out who you want the stakeholders to be, to invite them, to do advertising, you know, and it really is a lot of work to get full participation in the community, maybe, when you think about it, you know, you think about these three meetings, but when, when New Jersey School Board walks into these three meetings, ideally, I would be, this room would be set up with chairs and it would be full, and it would be full of a cross-section of the community, of students, of town council members, of the police chiefs, of the staff members, of the administration, of the board, so a whole cross-section of the community. So, if someone really needs to, you know, get out there, promote what we're doing, help the community understand why we're doing this, and then, you know, bring it, and then, bring it all together. And then, the three meetings are typically held once a month. Each meeting is about an hour and a half, and then, after that, then, we would then, you know, present the final report back to the board, the administration would write action plans, and then, the board would approve it. So, it's kind of like about a six- or seven-month process from start to finish, with the community kind of being involved in the three months of it, in the three meetings. When we've talked about those stakeholders and how important it is to get a cross-representation of the community, these are some suggestions, and we do have information that I'll give to your administrative team that, you know, further expands on this, of, you know, and you, as a board, might want to think about it as well, who, you know, who you want to see represented, whose voice do we think it's important that we hear in this process? Then, you know, we bring the stakeholders together, we always start out in, like, a big, large group forum, and then, we break into groups of eight to 10 people, so that everyone has the opportunity, then, to sit and talk. And if you've talked to any other boards who have been through this before, most of them will tell you that this is really the most important part of the process, is just providing this opportunity for your community to sit down together with different, you know, stakeholders in their group, and just talk about your school district, and just the opportunity to have those conversations. A lot of times, people say that that's as much of a benefit as the plan itself that you get. And then, everybody comes back together at the end, and each group, then, will share their work, so that every, you know, everyone has the opportunity to hear what the other groups were thinking. So, what's your role as a board? You know, a lot of it, you've already, kind of, gotten started, just based on the fact that you already had this understanding that this is something that's important for you to do. We set it as a goal last year, as a two-year goal, so, you know, you needed to approve the process. When the goals are finalized, you're going to have to approve the goals. You need to make sure that the district has the resources needed to support the goals. At the first meeting, the board president typically makes welcoming remarks, and as board members, your role can be just, you know, you'll have to decide what you want that to be. In some boards, they do not participate in the groups themselves, but are just there to, kind of, maybe, help check people in, just, kind of, greet people, and, you know, you want to make sure that this is the community's process, and at no time does the community feel like it can't say what it wants, or have the freedom to really express their opinion. So, you need to, kind of, you know, make sure that even if you do participate, that you take your board hat off, and that you're here almost as a community member, and, kind of, you know, walk that balance. You know, as part of your oversight, you need to make sure that the plan is communicated to the community, that it's implemented, that you align, you know, your district initiatives to the plan, and keeping the plan alive was sometimes is the most complicated. Sometimes, I'll go into boards and they'll say, "Well, I think we had a plan, but we don't really know where it is, or what happened to it." So, it really does take some work to make sure that it is that guiding force, that it is, when I walk into one of your school buildings, I should know that you have a strategic plan, and what that, what the outcome of that plan is. When I look on your website, I should be able to see it. So, you know, it's something, it's, that's, you know, again, a big task in keeping it alive and keeping it the focus of moving the district forward. So, everything revolves around your mission statement, so as part of it, you know, we'll always have your mission statement there in front of the group, making sure that the goals that they do set help support the district's mission statement. Sometimes, we'll even, if the district wants to review it and say, "Okay, is the mission statement still reflecting what it is that, you know, what we want for our students?" So, like I said, that first meeting identifies where we are now, goes through the superintendent's state-of-the-district report. We ask each group, and when they're in their small groups, to identify what they believe are the top 10 strengths of the district, and what the top 10 challenges are that they believe that the district is facing. In that second meeting of the vision, what we do is, we ask each group to pretend that they've been on a deserted island, had no access to technology, they come back five years later, find your school district on the cover of Time Magazine as a school district that succeeds, and said, "How did that happen? You know, what does it look like? What is the, like, if I were to open that article, what's the title? What are some things that people would write about? You know, what is it that's going on in your district that, you know, that made that happen?" And we tell them, kind of, throw park out the window, throw the budget out the window, throw Common Core out the window, just really focused on, what are those things that you want for your students? Where do you want to see your district five years from now? And then, at the end of that second meeting, we take the information from the first meeting, we take the information from the second meeting, and now, we need to, kind of, narrow it down a little bit, and we said, "Okay, if you could take, kind of, the common threads of what you heard as each one of the groups reported out, and you, if we could put everything into about four buckets, what would be those four buckets that we would put everything into?" And those would be your goal areas. So, then, in the next meeting, then, when somebody, you know, when the group's going to come to write the goal statements, it will be around one of these four goal areas that we've identified, like student achievement, facilities and finance, you know, so as you've been hearing the groups talking about things, saying, "What are these big buckets that we can put it into?" And then, then, the third meeting is, how are we going to get there, that roadmap? And what happens, then, is that the groups will come in, and we will have resorted all of the strengths and the challenges from the first meeting, and all of the visions from the second meeting by those, kind of, four buckets, or those four goal areas, so that when you come in, you can self-select which goal area you want, you're interested in, and then, you will have all of that information from the first two meetings, then, to help you write a goal statement. So, here, you know, was facilities and finance, safety and security, so they had those visions, they had strengths and challenges, and from that information, then, this group wrote this, you know, this goal statement. We say that the goal statements are broad, when you think about it, they're going to be in effect for five years. The objectives, kind of, help narrow it down a little bit as to what it is that we're talking about, and, but then, the real specificity comes in the action plans, then, as to how we're going to accomplish this. So, and that's typically what the action plans look like, that for each goal statement, under that goal statement, those objectives, each objective typically has its own action plan as to how it's going to be accomplished. And the timeline, you know, and when we write the action plans, you know, we think about the fact that there's some things that we can do right away that are going to be easy, there's some things that are going to have to be budgeted for, there's some things that may be sequential, that you have to do one task first before you can do the next one. So, as we're looking at and identifying those timelines of some of these things, you know, those are the types of things that the administration will be taking into consideration when they write the action plans. So, there's just, kind of, a sample of one that was done, and then, you know, a lot of times, I get asked, "Okay, so how do all these pieces fall together, then? Once the strategic plan is done, how does this all work together?" So, ideally, then, that strategic plan is setting that five-year direction, then, when we set the annual district goals, that will help keep the strategic plan alive. That's how we take that, and we make it, you know, extract out of that what's important for this year. And then, ideally, that translates into the board goals, and then, the goals that you set as your annual goals, you should see the, this serving as the foundation, and see the building goals that the principals set should all be, as part of that foundation, the learning that's going on in the classroom should all be building on these goals, then, that were set, that all came from, you know, the initial direction of the strategic plan. Just, kind of, a way to help the community understand that it is important that we all work together toward the, you know, for the better of Denville Township's students. Anyone have any questions for me about the strategic plan or the strategic planning process?
Anyone want to start?
I think I understand the process that you just laid out. I guess my question is, thought in hiring New Jersey School Boards, we were bringing in you as an outside person, so that the community would feel at ease that we weren't putting our thumb on it. So, I don't understand the necessity of a internal strategic planning coordinator.
Okay. Some of it is, you know, when bringing us in, we are here for those three meetings, but, like I said, when I show up at that meeting, there needs to be, or ideally, there will be a roomful of people that someone needs to have taken a lot of time and effort to reach out to them, help the community understand what you're doing, why you're doing it, encourage them to participate, there needs to be technology set up, ideally, there will be food for, like, so it needs to be a process that's brought together, so that when we come in, we are coming in, then, to facilitate work that has already been done, to help the process get started.
Okay, so, but I guess, I don't understand, and I am not sure the way I should be phrasing this question, I mean, in other districts, do they hire someone separate, or does their superintendent do it? I mean, our superintendent ideally has most of those relationships with the police department, with the town council, with the mayor's office, with he's the person that goes to our, the business, whatever that is called, you know, the community.
It's, some of it's, again, you know, kind of, walking that fine line of wearing that hat. I mean, when, as much as New Jersey School Boards is going to, you know, to be there and be the facilitators, there's also the perception that because the superintendent is the educational leader of the community, that you have to make sure that, you know, you, kind of, I don't want to say the superintendent's, I don't want to say taking it away, taking a backseat, that not the person who's leading it, you know, there needs to be, kind of, that separation. You know, sometimes, I have even seen, when the superintendent does the state-of-the-district report, and then, the people will go into their groups, and when is then, I go around and listen to what they're talking about, a lot of times, all they're talking about is what the superintendent just told them, as opposed to them coming up with their own thoughts and their own ideas. So, it needs to be that delicate balance, and the superintendent just needs to be there as, kind of, a resource, but not the leader, or not the figurehead running the process.
Isn't that you? You're the figurehead running the process?
I'm kind of the, that independent third party who's...
Facilitator, you're a facilitator in that sense.
Yes.
I mean, to balance, I think what Mariana's saying is that you, you want, I think, your superintendent to have the weight to bring all the stakeholders here and get them here.
Yes.
Right? But at the same time, you want it to be seen as an independent process.
Yes.
So, I mean, you always need to have a coordinator, I think you had said this before, there has to be a coordinator from the district side.
Yes.
To run it, whether it's the superintendent or whether it's somebody else. But the question is, who's that going to be? And is it going to be one person, or it could be a couple theoretically, too, if I decide?
I mean, that's up to the district to determine how you want to do that. I guess we're basically saying that it's important that we have a point of contact, that there is a coordinator, that there is someone responsible for making sure that all of these things happen, and it makes a big difference in the outcome when it, when someone has a vested interest in making this successful. So, you know, districts have different amounts of resources, so there's no one right answer for each district, based on how, you know, thinly spread your administration are, you know. I guess you, as a board, have to decide, "Okay, perhaps your superintendent could do that, but is that where you want him spending his time?" So, I guess that's, kind of, how you would need to answer that question, like, what makes the most sense for your district? I don't know the answer to that. I'm assuming that you've had, it sounds like you've had a different proposal of someone other than to do that for that reason, among other reasons, I'm sure, so...
Well, at our last board meeting, we were presented with a job description to hire a strategic planner, an internal coordinator, and the discussion happened then about, I'll speak for myself, I didn't understand why the superintendent couldn't be this person, the internal coordinator, and it was, in the course of the discussion, we talked back to, when you were with us last time, when we set this as a goal, some people had the understanding that you were telling us that we needed to have it seem impartial, so it couldn't be, and I said, "I didn't understand, but I heard you speak, I thought you were talking about New Jersey School Boards coming in, and therefore, it's impartial because we ourselves aren't running the meetings." So, part of the board understood what you said to be, we had to hire someone other than the superintendent to be the internal coordinator, and some of us thought you coming in, you being New Jersey School Boards, and in our case, you, coming in to run our meetings, would provide that impartiality that we weren't running the meetings and therefore putting our thumb on the meetings. So, I guess, I'm looking for some, you know, clarity, and I'm not sure, from listening to you right now, it sounds to me like you're not saying we have to hire someone other than our superintendent to be the internal coordinator, or am I mishearing you?
I mean, we would never come in and tell you to hire someone. I mean, that's, that's a local decision. I'm telling you that we need to have a point person, we need to have a coordinator. How you determine who that coordinator is, is up to you, so you need to take, you know, understand what's going on in your local district to figure out what will make the best sense for you in terms of how that role is fulfilled. I mean, in, it's, I've seen it all different ways. I mean, I've definitely seen someone other than the superintendent quite often who is that person. Sometimes, it has been the superintendent who was that person, and sometimes, it has been a committee that I have worked with. So, it is dependent on the district, so I guess, in your case, like I said, you need to determine if that, how you can best use your resources and what makes the best sense for you.
Okay, well, so, and that was part of why we asked you to speak about this night, because, as you know, I spoke with you before our last board meeting, and I said that at the board meeting, that you would explain that different boards do it different ways, but people definitely had come away from the understanding when we did our last goal-setting, which I believe was last September, October.
September, yes.
Okay, you know, from when we set the goal that we needed somebody separate to be the coordinator with you. So, I guess it's a discussion that we don't necessarily have to have tonight, except for the fact that it's on our agenda, I guess, but we don't necessarily have to have it.
We do.
We can have it when we get to that. But I just wanted to make sure it was clear that, since we came away with two different basic understandings from last September's discussion.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, we could never tell you that you had to hire someone, that...
Well, no, but I mean...
No, and I don't think that was...
I didn't mean it that way, and as soon as you started speaking, I, I know that New Jersey School Boards policy is, local control is what you advocate for us at the state level, too, so of course, you would leave that to us as a decision, but as a best practice, if you had a recommendation, just like, you know, with other things, you have recommendations on what's best practice.
My best practice would be the fact that the coordinator, you know, when you think about it, the success of the process is not what I'm going to say to the roomful of people, but to the people...
It's getting the roomful of people.
Getting the roomful of people, and the right people in the room, those people being invested in the reason why they're here, wanting to participate, understanding why they're here, and then, not only getting them here for a one-time thing, but then, it becomes part of your community culture, that this is what the district is doing, this is what's important to the district, we're going to keep this alive, and we need all of your, all of your help to help us do that, so when you come here, understand that you are coming here for that reason. So, you need to make sure, then, that, you know, someone who's ever taking this responsibility is able to, you know, to do all of that, you know, because if you are putting the money out to hire us to do it, you know, you want to get the best outcome that you can, and I mean, I could walk into the same room of 10 people, or a room of 100 people, and do the same process, but the outcome's going to be very different based on the commitment and the, you know, interest of the people in the room.
So, really, what we're saying, what you're saying, is that we need someone on our end to sell the basic idea to...
To come to meetings.
...all of the, all of the stakeholders, sell the idea that this is important, that people need to show up, to all the various people listed in, in the, in the presentation, but not only that, it needs to be somebody who will follow through, be able to follow through, and continue to, continue to, to sell that, to drive it, I don't know if sell that's the right word, continue to drive it forward, so people continue to show up to meetings and...
And there's a lot of logistics in, you know, making sure you've got all the small classrooms that the people need, making sure you have the technology, making sure people feel welcome, making sure they get checked in, you know, so it's, you want your community to feel comfortable, feel good about the fact that they're here, and do it right, I guess.
I mean, my, I don't know, my feeling about this is, you have two, kind of, semi-competing interests here. You have a superintendent who lives in town, who has credibility, you know, in terms of credibility going out and bringing these stakeholders here, that's obviously valuable, but do we also want our superintendent being the one organizing the rooms and moving, kind of, the day-to-day process of this forward? So, you have this administrator versus superintendent, you know, which is the right, which is the right one here, and obviously, that's for us to decide, but I'm not, you know, to me, it's not completely clear-cut. Is that a fair, kind of, estimate of this? I mean, we're balancing that credibility and that ability to bring the stakeholders in versus who's going to be best to manage this from a resources point of view.
And the fact that it is a multifaceted, you know, process that...
Charlene, when, when you get, when you give recommendations on who to select for that, that process and that committee, I would assume that, just so you don't want it biased, or you don't want it to be the people that we hand-select, so it becomes how we're directing them, or the administration, or whoever it is, directing them, do you give recommend, I mean, how do, how do you guys recommend pulling people that are, kind of, maybe not the typical folks, right? So, you listed a lot of the typical folks, right? Town council, the mayor, maybe, or, you know, police officials, people that we deal with every day, all day, right? So, they know what our goals, what our missions are, so, to me, those are people that, they're good to have there, but really, almost more importantly, is the people who are not always actively involved in the schools, maybe, or are active, but not active at that level. So, do you guys have recommendations on how to do that, or, or recommendations on who to pull? I mean, is there, is there a social media that we should be going after and advocating that we're looking for folks? What's that line on, when you start asking for that? Do you end up with 100 people in the room, or 200, you know? How do you guys recommend, kind of, doing that?
Well, and that's something that you're going to have to decide, that the scope of the project that you would like it to be, and, I mean, we have done it where there, where you will, kind of, send a letter to some select groups, and not particularly pick the people, but pick the groups, and let those groups decide who, you know, they want to send to represent them, and then, also, just put it on your website and open it up to anyone, or put it in the paper and open it up to anyone. So, you know, some people will say, "Okay, we just want to keep our," some district will say, "Okay, we just want to keep a, kind of, a group of about 40 people, and we're going to, kind of, target and select who we want," and other people will say, "You know what? This is for our community, we'll open it up, whoever shows, you know, we ask them to RSVP, so we're going to be prepared." And, so, we have gone in, like I said, I've, you know, had groups of 100, and sometimes, we think we should be so lucky, right, to get that many voices and get that many people here, but the process will work for that number of people as well.
Great, anyone else, any other questions?
Have you seen any districts taking and picking the internal coordinator, using that as a merit goal for an administrator, instead of, like, a stipend or something like that?
I guess, to be truthful, I don't see a lot of administrators' miracles, that's usually not something that we're involved in, in New Jersey, because it's usually a contractual relationship between the superintendent and the board. a contractual relationship between the superintendent and the board, so I wouldn't know to answer that question.
Okay.
Any other questions?
That's great. Thank you.
Okay. So I guess the next thing in the process then, that we'll go through then, is your board self-evaluation. Do I have paper copies? Does anyone need them?
I do. I haven't seen it yet.
You didn't get one mailed?
No. I didn't get the email.
Get what emailed?
Get what emailed.
It's not the first time that's happened to me. I apologize.
No, the, the last time it was when I asked for a copy of something, you sent it to everybody else.
Yeah. Thank you. That's not the first time that's happened.
Thank you.
I guess I'll just pass.
I'll try. I feel slighted.
I'll make it easier. Thank you.
The last one I have about that is the reminder that we still have to complete it.
We're sorry, because I just.
Yeah. You didn't get it one either.
Okay. Well, I want to start out thanking you, because all seven of you completed it. So it's not that often that I get a board that everybody does it. So I wanted to thank you for taking the time, each one of you, to do that.
It was not for lack of courage.
See, it works, right? You know, and just like even for the board to do the self-evaluation, you know, it used to be required by CUSAC, it isn't anymore. So those boards that do it, or continue to fill it out, do it because it's a good governance practice. You hold the rest of the district accountable, so this is your way to hold yourselves accountable. It's a way for you to reflect back on how you did in this past year, a way for you to kind of get issues, you know, out, out before you that are important to the board, in kind of a way, when we're setting board goals, a lot of times, information in here will help us, you know, in that process. So I just wanted to take you through it. I have to say, as a group, you're probably the most honest group that, that fills us out as I'm going through it, you know. I have seen there's some boards that everything is highly rated, and, you know, you guys not only, you know, didn't always rate the board that high on things, you didn't rate yourselves that high on things, is how you do individually, and that almost never happens. So as I'm going through this, you know, this is on a 4.0 scale, and so the range of the, that the board's responses were, was from a low of a 2.5 to a high of a 3.2, with an average score of 2.7. So, and we basically kind of, in New Jersey school boards, use 3.0 as kind of that cutoff point, and saying anything underneath that, as a board, those might be areas that you might want to look at. So you can see, in your case, you, you know, there would be a lot of areas we're going to, that we might want to look at. But again, like I said, it kind of goes back to the board and, you know, the, I guess, you know, the honesty that you put forward in it. You know, one of the things, the first page is, what do you value? What do you think is important? So what we look at on here is student achievement, at least to be, to make sure that the board is focused in the right place. So when you look at how your board evaluated student achievement, three of you said it was vital, and four of you said it was very important. So that gave you an overall of a 3.4, which is among the higher, but not the highest that you gave. And I think, you know, it goes back to, as you go through some of the comments that you see in the board self-evaluation, like I said, there's a lot of indications in here that you guys are focused on other things, and sometimes things perhaps you shouldn't be focused on, and you say that in here. So I, you know, ideally, the board needs to get to a point where all seven of you think student achievement is vital, and that it's the focus of everything that you do, and the focus of every decision that you make, and what the board is working on, and knowing that all of those other things, for the most part, are usually administrative tasks. So you can kind of see the work or the growth that the board still needs to do to get to that point. So I'm just going to take you through the board self-evaluation itself, and just go through some of the highlights on it. So the first section was planning, and this was the area where the board evaluated itself the lowest, so that's where the board's score was, that 2.5. And if you look at the responses about the board, as you look across the page, you can see that you guys really aren't on the same page with this, that some people think things are commendable, where some people might think they're good, some people think they're adequate, it just kind of went all the way across. And a lot of times, that's usually when the board is not on the same page about something, that usually does end up translating into their lowest score. You know, one of the things that I thought was interesting in here, if you look at some of the comments that the board members wrote, you know, I think, you know, some of the reason why this is low is that the board recognizes and has for some time the need to get the community involved in your vision, you know, in your long-term strategic planning process, to, you know, to have more of a long-term process. But, you know, there were some comments in here that I guess I'm not sure about of the board, saying that perhaps in reflecting on the, the district goals that have been set in the past, that they are not reflective enough of the board's vision, or that the board would like to, so I guess I'm not sure, as we're doing goal setting tonight, if there's anything we need to do to change that process, to bring that into consideration, knowing that when we do set goals, we are doing it together. And then there was also, you know, I guess one person rated the board unsatisfactory in reviewing action plans and monitoring progress. So again, I'm not sure what steps you as the board take, or, you know, in reviewing the action plans and the progress, to make sure that it is meeting your needs. I mean, I know that I saw on your website, the action plans were out there, they were well-written, they were very detailed, so I know that you're getting action plans. I guess I'm just, you know, trying to get a better sense of, you know, what it is that the board is looking for. You know, and a lot of times, I find when I go into districts, that boards sometimes are not even clear that they're getting updates on the district goals, that you might have a report from an administrator, or you might have a student demonstration, or there's things, you're getting information and not really realizing that part of the reason you're getting that information is because it's giving you an update, or, you know, it's part of a district goal that you set. So sometimes we need to make sure that we make that connection, and that when the board is getting information, to make sure that it's clear that that information is a result of a district goal that was set. And I know some boards do, and I don't know if you do this as well, that if the board is approving things on an agenda that are related to a goal, to actually write that goal number on the agenda, so that you as the board can make the connection between the work that you're doing, and how you're helping, you know, toward the accomplishment of the goal. So I don't know if any of those are things that, you know, would, would help you. Then as we go through this, too, we also want to look at, you know, you filled us out about the board as a whole, and then about you as the board member. So ideally, the board as a whole would have a higher score than about you as the board member, with the hope that there's some synergy in you working together as a group, and that as a group, you would be able to accomplish anything, you know, more than what any one of you can do individually. So, you know, in this particular one, you rated yourselves higher than the board as a whole, and then sometimes it goes, it flip-flops back and forth, but just wanted you to kind of be conscious of that as we're going through these as well. Does anyone have any, before we leave, planning, any questions or thoughts about some of the comments that are in there, or anything that we've talked about? I know you really haven't had much of a chance to look this over.
I like the suggestion of tying agenda items to the goals. You know, again, you know, my challenge is always that, you know, we do this part-time, so, you know, sometimes the disconnect can be large between, you know, what we said then and what we're doing now. And I feel, you know, I, I, again, I'm not going to speak for everybody, I speak for myself, I feel that way. You know, sometimes there's a disconnect, and I'm not always following, you know, where we are, and that can be frustrating.
Well, and I, I think, I think we have gotten action plans, like you said, I mean, you were able to find them on the website, I know we get them. I think it might be sometimes a matter of how important we think that is. Is that just a presentation beforehand, and then we're on to all the minutia in the agenda? Or is that more of a focus that we need to take on, evaluate beforehand, ask a lot of questions to the superintendent as to kind of the process? Or is that just a, oh yeah, we saw it, check, check the box kind of thing? And then the only other thing I would say, as far as, you know, the difference between the board evaluation and then as each individual board member, the only little criticism I would say is, the questions are different. It's hard to say, you know, that, well, that you're rating yourselves individually higher than the board, the questions are different. It was the exact same set of questions, maybe the answers would be different, because, but I, I think also, in general, that's probably natural, that we as a board probably look at, you know, there's opportunities that maybe I recognize, and I would rate lower, but I might say, well, I do high, I do well in that, because that's something that's important to me personally, so, but yeah. I mean, I think that this is certainly an area that, that I know I've spoken to a few board members, that we really are, want to take, not take more seriously, but, but put a little more energy in this year, to make sure that are the goals and the planning that we're going to do at this meeting and the next couple of meetings, that really are thought, well-thought-out and well-planned. I think once we get the strategic plan, that it'll help to guide us a little bit more as we do board goals, so we've got this one year of a gap until we have that strategic plan in front of us. But I think it'll be important tonight to kind of set those goals that we think are meaningful and important, so.
Well, you know, and another, you know, big piece of what the action plans play for you as a board, is that's how you should help determine whether the superintendent accomplished the goals or not. So when we set those district goals, and, you know, the goals are usually kind of general, just because, you know, we are setting the what. So then the detail comes in the action plans. So then, okay, now it's a year later, it's time for you to evaluate the superintendent. You don't really just sit, look at that general goal statement and say, gee, what do I think about this? Do I think he accomplished it or not? That's then where the action plan comes into play. And you look at the goal statement, you look at the action plan, and you say, did he do everything in here that he said he was going to do? If he did, then essentially, you know, this is how this goal was accomplished. So you now have an objective way to look at the accomplishment of the goal, versus just what you think by reading the goal statement. So when, that's really, you know, another big piece of the puzzle for the board in terms of the, you know, the importance of the action plans.
Well, and I think a big part of this is if, and the indication in the comments certainly seems like we weren't all happy with the goals that were set out last year. So if you're not happy with the goal, you're not going to be happy with the action plan. So we may have been really critical ourselves for the action plans, may have gotten them, but if you weren't happy with the goal, you're not going to be happy with the action plan. So I think that may have been part of the, the action plan deficit.
I agree. I also think that from the meeting when we were going over the goals, when you, you know, when we were working on the evaluation, I think what I heard people say during that meeting, which was not, the first year I've heard board members say this, was, but these action plans don't necessarily support the goal, what I think needed to be done in order for the goal to have been met. And I know, I think two years ago, when you were with us setting goals, I spoke about that, and I know we don't, we see the action plans, but I don't know that we can bounce them back and say, no, we don't think this proves the goal has been met.
Right. You just accept them.
We just accept them. So, I mean, I think, and this is from my many years on the board, this is not the first board that I've sat with that came time to do the evaluation of the goals and said, well, yeah, that's great, they may have done the ABC that they said they were going to do, the action plan, but that doesn't prove that the goal has been met. So how does a board reconcile that? Because I think part of the, you know, discontent, as Mike pointed out, maybe that the board itself realized, I don't like the goal period, but part of it, from my recollection of the discussion, was, we may or may not have liked the goal period, but we don't think that it met the level of what we thought needed to be done in order for the goal to be met.
Well, I mean, that's why the goals are set together, so that.
Yeah, but if we set the goals together, and all we get to do is accept the action plans, if it's not on the action plan, and we're not going to think it's met, when we're accepting it, do we say that? I mean, where is the?
Yeah, it seems like there should be more of a process between the goal setting and the action plan, that the collaboration continues, because it's, I think it's unfair for them to get, kind of go off and write the action plan, and then come back with it pulled without any, any input other than that one goal session, to really get an idea of what we really meant, what seven different people meant.
Which might be broad, right? Because it's, you just said, they should naturally be a little bit broad, the goals, because we're not setting the direct action. We're not saying, do this, right? So we're setting a bigger picture. So it's hard, because that bigger picture has seven different views as to how it should get accomplished. And each one of us have a different idea, so if it's not exactly what each one of us thinks, and we think, oh, well, that, that wasn't so great. It may have been accomplished, but it didn't get accomplished the way I felt it would, it should have been. So, I mean, you have boards that say that? I mean, is that unusual to us, or is that typical? Are we crazy?
Yes.
Do I have to answer that?
Yes.
You know, I think what usually happens is when we're setting the goal, that we have conversation about the goal. Like, you know, usually we're identifying focus areas, we're things that, you know, that the board is concerned about, and then it's those things then that help translate into the goal. So a lot of times, you know, the superintendent should have what the board members' thoughts are, just from the conversation that we had before this became a goal. Sometimes when I write the goals, boards will give me some bulleted things, like, okay, if we're going to do student, like, let's say, student achievement is the goal issue, then under student achievement, there's a couple bulleted things that go in there, just kind of as a way to get, you know, to make sure that it captures that conversation that the board had with the superintendent, to make sure then, that, you know, that the board's thoughts are incorporated.
I'm not sure anybody's totally happy with that answer.
Well, I mean, you really have to separate.
This is the most unhappy board.
I mean, you guys really are like just dying to jump into that how, and you really gotta, you know, back away and separate yourselves from that. You really have to stay focused on your job, and your job is the what, and your job is to hold him accountable to the what. And if you're not doing your job, no one else is doing it. Other, if you start doing the administrator's job, you've already paid someone to do that. If you're not doing your job, no one else is doing it, and it's not going to get done. So you as a board have to keep pushing back and start, you know, keeping focused on your job, and not be focused on what the administration's job, and then hold your administrator accountable for doing his job. You can't fully hold him accountable if you're involved in the process. You've now inserted yourself in the process and kind of stirred up the pot a little bit, so you can't fully hold him accountable. We got a little off-target, didn't we? Okay. As we continue to go through this, then, under policy, I don't think there was that, you know, again, one of the things that kind of came out was kind of the same general theme of, okay, we know that there are regulations that are written to support the policies, are they being followed? We don't see them. So again, kind of that same consistent theme of, you know, the regulations are the responsibility of the administration. So most of your policy, or your policy should have written regulations that go along with them, those that need it.
But, but those regulations, so we've talked about this a lot. I mean, the policy and the regulation are almost identical many times, right? I mean, they're not very, it's not like you look at it and go, oh, the regulation really lays out a lot more detail than the, the policy. I mean, in my experience in approving these regulations and policies, they're so, they're so closely tied, some of them need regulations, some of them don't. Do you see many districts have, and I noticed in here on number five, it says, develops appropriate procedures and regulations to implement the board's policy, but we're approving the regulations, so I don't know why that is written that way.
Well, you don't always approve the reg.
We do have all regulate, regular board regulations are approved, even though they don't have to be. I know the superintendent can approve some regulations, the state mandated ones.
Are the only ones that the board needs to approve.
Are the ones that they have to approve, but it's been the policy, or, I don't know if that's the right word, it's been the practice of this board to approve all regulations. And we do it in, in over, over two months, two months, even for revision. So it, and it's something that I'm fine with, and I think the board's fine with. Now, we do get involved in sometimes talking about the difference between policy, regulation, and then just some procedures that are not necessarily board-approved, they're a procedure. And even tonight, there was a procedural manual that the business administrator made on purchasing. There's policies within the, within the procedure, but the manual is not a board-approved document, it's just, it's board-shared, so the board can see it, but it's not approved.
But that's the. But that's the first time I've seen, and maybe it's just me, but a written procedure or something in a district that's not a policy or regulation. I don't know how everybody else feels, but, I mean, when it says on here, ensure the administration develops appropriate procedures, I mean, I, outside of saying we have them, I haven't physically seen a lot of procedures. In fact, I even said to Damaris tonight, thank you for showing it to us, because it's the first time I've seen it. And she revised it and went through some of the stuff on it. So I appreciate seeing those types of things, if you guys have them, because it's not approved by me, but at least I know behind the scenes, you guys have procedures that are being maintained and updated and followed. So I guess that's the only feedback I would give. And that's an area that you can see on here that we rated ourselves low on, or the board low on, so.
I've never seen any procedure manual, procedure, anything in my time on the board.
Okay. The next section was student achievement. And here, I think it's kind of a, again, consistent of the same type thing of saying, okay, you know, maybe we need to do a better job of evaluating the programs, being aware of what it is that our community wants from us. So, you know, but I think, you know, the district has said that you, you know, that it is an area that is important to the district. I think you recognize the importance of it and just now, you know, need to kind of fine-tune it, I guess, even in some of the, in some of the comments as we're talking, when we get to the back about some of the challenges that the district is facing. You know, the board, you know, has talked about student achievement a lot in those challenges. So I know that it's something that the board is thinking about and is important to you. The next section is finance. And here again, you know, what we look at is, we need to make sure that you understand, you know, just the fact that your balancing act is getting so much more difficult with trying to maintain the programs, the needs of the students, and then balancing that with the needs of your taxpayers and making sure that you are giving your community the best education that you, that you can, that they can afford, that you can provide for them. Again, it looks like the board has had some questions about the level of information and making sure that all of you feel comfortable, you know, or understanding the information that you have. You know, I don't, you know, there was comments about not sure you're doing, that you do enough oversight, that you understand the information. So I don't know if there's anything more that you wanted to add to help us understand what we can be doing to help that. You know, some boards will have the admin, the business administrator do a training class for them. I've had some boards then that have said, okay, that's great. But then a couple months later, after that class is over, I don't remember what I was told. So if you could make me a cheat sheet so that I could, I could have that to refer to, that would be helpful. And then I was just in a board that they said, you know, we really would like some benchmarks. Like, what are some financial benchmarks that we should be looking at or looking for so that the board has that information to compare against? So all of those are different ways that maybe might help you as a board feel more comfortable in your financial oversight.
And we've done a lot more of that this year. So the finance committee now gets a budget versus actual on a monthly basis at the finance meeting, committee meeting. So, which has been really helpful being on finance. I mean, I guess, on these, I always look at the ones that we rated ourselves lowest on. So the one at number three, which says, requires that all requests for unbudgeted expenditures be accompanied by a specific indication of need and funding sources. So, I mean, I can speak for myself. I think we all, we usually understand the specific indication of the need on why we need it. But maybe the question, I think, in there that triggered a little bit of a thought to myself is the funding source. So we often say, well, there's overages in other areas, and which is natural, and it's natural to have unbudgeted items that come up throughout the year. But, but certainly maybe a better understanding of, you know, where we're at with how we're gonna fund that specifically might be helpful. I'm just thinking off the cuff, just as, as, to help out kind of the administration on what might help the board a little bit more. I know that's sometimes hard, because there's overages and unders on, you know, each line item in each area. So it's a little bit hard, but that, that might help a little bit is the funding source indication. And then something I've brought up multiple times, and I'll continue to bring it up, is that, you know, on, I don't think that we have consistency on what ends up being on the bills list and what ends up being as a motion. And some of the stuff ends up being as a motion where I'm like, well, this was in the budget, this was, you know, every, this is under the budget, you know, line item amount, and it ends up on there. Other, I just, I just feel like that's something that, from my perspective, I would really like to understand. And maybe there's an opportunity on the agenda to add in whether it was a budgeted or unbudgeted item. I don't know how everybody feels about that. But there's a couple of things, I think, it's just a matter of communication. I think that, my opinion is, we've done really, really well with finance. I give a tremendous amount of credit to our administration, particularly Damaris, on what she's been doing and kind of, I don't wanna say fixing, but finding things that we could do better at and opportunities for us to, to do better. And, but those are just a few things that, for me, and I've brought up the agenda thing a few times, seems like, I'm not sure, maybe I'm just the only one that feels that way, but, but that's been a big issue for me, is I just don't understand why some things end up being a motion for 500 bucks and other things are just in the bills list for $1,000 that are both budgeted items. So it's, it's an internal board issue. I think that we need to kind of make sure that we are giving direction. And it's not fair to the administration if we're not giving them direction on what we want and don't want, I guess, at that point. So maybe something we can bring up in finance again.
Is that, as an aside, is that purely board discretion?
I don't know, to tell you the truth.
Oh, okay. I was gonna say, I, I know, as new board members came on and posed the question to me, I didn't have an answer. I, and all of my years of training, I don't remember ever hearing anything about when it has to be on the agenda versus when it can just be in a bills list. I always just left it up to the business administrator's discretion, but it's a good question. Can you find out if there's guidance on that? Because, and as Damaris has, you know, cleaned up and made things make more sense, you know, I, I now don't know, you know, I'll go with my business administrator, but the one before said something different. So I'm like, I have no idea, you know, how to answer the question. So.
And I, I like the suggestion that you mentioned about kind of a finance boot camp that some business administrators run for new board members. I mean, we have three board members here who have not, we haven't done the, the second year finance, you know, continued education.
Training yet.
Training yet. So, I mean, for us, a lot of it has been on the job, kind of, you know, figuring it out as we go.
And really, the training that you get for governance too is more global, like the funding formula and how your state, you know, it doesn't talk about what you need to do sitting here at the board table, the financial reports that you get every month and to help you decipher those. That's not the term.
I mean, if there was one piece of our onboarding that I would say could be expanded, it'd be that.
I agree.
I, I should be embarrassed to admit, but I think the way you said it, Charlene, is at least been my experience. I went and had my BA explain it to me when I first started, how to read all those reports. And then a month later, I was like, hmm, I can't quite remember that. And I got a refresher course. And then I started serving on the Ed Services Committee. And then I had that BA explain it to me, because I was too embarrassed to go back to the first BA. And she gave me two lessons. So a cheat sheet would be nice, because I created a cheat sheet with the BA so that I could have it to follow along with. So, I mean, I'm liking the sound of financial benchmarks, because I think I could follow that much better. Like I said, I should be embarrassed to admit that, but I know it's not as simple as sitting with Damaris once. Unless you really have a mind that thinks, like a business administrator and an accountant and.
This isn't our full-time job. We don't do this all the time. So it's easy enough to miss that.
I also think that's, and this is more of a statement than anything else, it's also difficult when, like, Charlene, like you were saying, that we need to take that high level. And then you give me a 45-page report with checks and trans, I mean, so minutia detail that I have to approve every single check. So sometimes I feel like there's that disconnect between, yes, we, we are forced to get into the detail when you're handing me a 45-page list of checks. And every single check I am approving legally on a legal document. So I, I understand, if you want us to get that high level, then don't get into the checks. But that's a state requirement. So, I mean, I think that's something that New Jersey School Board is a little bit of feedback, that, you know, I, I always struggle, because every time you say it, or somebody from the school board says it, it makes a lot of sense. And then the next meeting, you're like, here's the 300 pages of documents you have to go through, and you're approving the tiniest little details. So that's where I think it's sometimes difficult, we talk about governance of a board and what our jobs are. But I'll get off my soapbox now. Next page.
I was gonna say, at least until the next page, right? Okay, the next page is board operations. So this talks about how you feel, how effectively you are working together in your governance structure, which is your committee structure. So one of the things that I always look to make sure is, number two, to make sure that there's a climate that allows for free, open, and orderly discussions by all the board members. Because to me, that's kind of how your process, if your process as a board is going to work, that needs to be there, that needs to be in place. So based on what you were saying here, you know, for the most part, that is in place. You know, I thought it was interesting that four of you gave the board adequate of saying that you use good decision-making process only after you, information has been received and studied. So I'm not sure what, you know, and for four out of the seven of you to say that, I guess, you know, I wasn't quite sure what the board meant by that. And then I guess as, as we look at some of the comments, you know, it talks about, you know, I thought one comment was interesting that says, this board does not do collaboration. So.
Yeah, that, that one struck me too.
So that's kind of what, you know, that's your whole process of how you need to be effective and how your committee structure needs to work. So I'm not sure what it's felt is not working about it, but.
I, I think the, the second part of that same comment is interesting too, because it says, consists mostly of people who come to the meeting with their minds already made up. Part of that, I think, is us doing our homework. So I'd much rather people come with already doing their homework, knowing how they feel about an issue, instead of coming to a meeting, flying by the seat of their pants and saying, oh, well, you know, tell me how you guys feel, because I'll make my decision based on what I hear. No, I think that we all should be open to everybody's comments. And I, I think we are most of the time. I mean, I think certainly we have different opinions, which I think is important to the board and actually helps with the decisions we make, because they're not always the same feelings that each of us have. So.
That actually makes for a stronger board or makes for a better decision. So it's, so that's the important part, is that you need to take your, you know, instead of acting individually, each one of you is coming here with your own different strengths, your own talents, your own viewpoints, so that you can share it with your other board members when you're sitting at the board table. And when the board has that discussion about items, when you flip that coin and looked at every side of it, because you've heard different ideas and different viewpoints, when the board finally votes, you now could feel comfortable that you're making the best decision possible for the best interests of the students, knowing that you've had these discussions, you've had these conversations, you've heard these differing ideas. So that when you do take a vote, you can, you know, know that it's based on varying ideas that will help you determine what's the best idea. Other than that, it sounds like, you know, also too, you know, needing to make sure from the committee structure that, you know, you're getting the information you need, that your committees are doing the work of the board. And then the next section was board performance. And that's where you rated yourself the highest. That's where the 3.2 came in. And a lot of it is, and again, the comments seem to support it, of saying that it is something that you do well, that you, you do take an ethical approach to the job, that you do understand, you know, the, the need for ethics, for the confidentiality, for making sure that, that this is a respectful process. And then the next section was board superintendent relationships. And here again, I think, you know, the board, again, kind of a similar theme, if you look at the comments, you're like, okay, like, we know that we get involved sometimes in areas that we shouldn't. We know that we need to step back. We know that we have to trust our superintendent to do the job that we hired him to do. And then the next section is board and staff relationship. And, you know, here, when you think about it, what relationship can the board have with the staff? You know, all your communication should go through the superintendent. So your relationship with the staff should be making sure, do you support your staff? Do you recognize your staff? Do you provide them the professional development opportunities that they need? Do you, you know, have good, sound personnel policies? So those are the types of things, as you look at your relationship with your staff, you should be looking at it from that context. So I think there was a couple of comments in here, and somebody had rated unsatisfactory for providing for public recognition of staff achievements, saying that it was thought that as a board, while you do some, you could do a better job at it. So I don't know if the rest of the board feels that way, but that was something that came out of this.
One of the things that came up here too, that I figure it's a good time to bring it up to Steve, was school activities. I know that some of us have talked about, you know, having more of a board presence at more school activities. And if, I, I don't know if it's just a matter of us getting on the calendar more, or how we can get the word out about certain things. Certain times, I think, I know about certain activities, sometimes I don't. Maybe we can coordinate a little better just to have some representation of the board at more school activities. That's all.
Well, you know what I can do is, I, I'm not gonna guarantee that I don't miss one, but on my weekly report, I'll do a little, I'll put a couple bullet points of a couple things coming up the next week.
That'd be great.
But I could miss one. I just.
Yeah, no, no, no.
I think it'd be better than right now.
And I, I was, I was one that I think we can do a better job recognizing our staff publicly. I think we do it a lot at some of the meeting. I think we do a lot of student recognition at our meetings. And maybe there's an opportunity to recognize some more staff members. I haven't ever seen us do like a staff member of the year, or something, something where we can recognize some more staff members. I think we have some incredible staff, and I know they work hard. So maybe it's just an opportunity for us to do it a little bit more. That's all.
Sure.
I would agree that we could do it more, but I've always felt, for some of the student, you know, recognition is tied to the program that teachers do.
It does. You're right.
Not all of it, when we bring them in for the teams that achieve, I achieve, but we recognize the teachers that are leading those teams then also.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, I mean, they sort of go hand in hand. But yes, I think we could, even when it's not tied to bringing the students in, I would have no problem recognizing our staff. We have wonderful staff.
And we need to think about how we do that too, because what I don't wanna do is almost make it like a punishment to them, because then they have to come to a board meeting publicly at night. I'm being serious.
I agree. I agree.
Maybe it's at a staff meeting, maybe we can try to get a board member or two there to, to do it so that it's not outside of their own time. I mean, let's, let's try to think outside the box a little bit, not perfect. But I'm being honest. I mean, it's, it's kind of like the old, you know, here's your recognition.
They're on YouTube.
Which is a plus, which they're, most of them are gonna consider a plus.
Why, they love watching YouTube.
Well, and some of it too, you know, doesn't even have to be recognition just for accomplishments. Some of it could be, you know, recognition for, like, let's say that you paid for a professional development program, and several of the staff members went, they came back, and they're really excited. So it would be good for you, the board, to hear from them, what that experience was like, what they learned, how they're sharing it with the rest of the district. You know, so when, when, when you think about staff recognition, it can be for, you know, don't just, don't just limit it.
That's a great idea.
Don't just limit it to accomplishments, but think of ways that, you know, you can recognize things that your staff are doing in, you know, in more ways than just the traditional sense.
And also, I mean, when we use technology, maybe similar to that, if they're doing something in the classroom where they can almost record a clip or something, and you can bring it in and show it in a meeting, it doesn't have to be anything fancy. I don't want somebody to spend a whole bunch of time doing it, but just for us to kind of see some of the things, that's a great point. I mean, I think that would be awesome. But if we can use technology to, to avoid them having to come to a meeting or something like that, just to think about them, so.
We can do much more of it that way.
Yeah.
Okay. Then the last section was board and community. And this is always a challenge, but I, you know, just to make sure that, you know, no matter what you do to reach out to the community, to engage your community, and you always feel like you can do more, there's more, you know, you'd have to keep trying and have to keep working on it. And I think as a board, if you look at some of the comments you made, it sounds like, you know, that you are, you are responsive to your community and what it is that your community wants. But then, but then again, one of you, I think, rated unsatisfactory in terms of the board having an effective community relations program. So, you know, I guess, and I feel like, you know, community outreach, whenever we've done goals, it's always been a goal in some form or another. So I know that it's a focus for the district. for the district. Does anyone have any questions about any of these categories that we went through? Okay, then the last part of the board self-evaluation was two open-ended questions. So you were asked to identify challenges, three major challenges facing the district, knowing that student achievement, you know, is your highest priority. So as you look through some of the answers, we try and see where are those kind of consistencies? Where are some of those things where, you know, more than one of you said it? So funding and being able to maintain the programs that you have, your staffing, making sure that, you know, you are attracting and retaining and have high-quality staff in the classroom, meeting the needs of all of your students, there was mention of the special ed students, making sure you're meeting their needs, making sure you're meeting the needs of the students in the middle, and then also the impact of the testing. So those were among some of the responses that the board gave. And then you were asked to identify any areas where you, as a board, might need some training, understanding it, you know, your role as a policymaking body. And some of the things we talked about, the budgeted oversight, the unbudgeted expenses, and again, making sure that, you know, as a board, that you kind of separate that role between your role and the administration's role. Anyone have any questions about anything from the board self-evaluation? Okay, then there's three charts in here, so just not to spend much time on them, but just to help you understand what they mean. The first chart compares what you said on the first page of what you said you value versus how the board's board itself in each one of those areas, thinking that there should be some kind of relationship between what's important to you and kind of where you put your, you know, your resources and efforts. The second chart is the board to individuals, so that top to the bottom in each case, and then the third chart on the back is how you evaluated yourself as a board this year versus how you evaluated yourself last year. So you can see that it's pretty close, in some cases you went down in some, in some you went up in some, but, you know, not that much of a difference between last year and this year. Any questions about any of it? Okay, then the next step in the process then, you know, that we would go through, thank you so much, would be, you know, talking about the goal setting, kind of to see where the board wanted to go this year. We have last year's goals for you, I don't know if the board has that information in front of you, or if you'd like me to pass that out.
We can pull it up on the Chromebooks, but if you have it handy.
Okay.
Well, that's a good point, you might as well, I guess you're, make sure it wasn't a vein, it's a vein sacrum.
That's right.
And we also need to think about too, like, I just went into another board that is doing strategic planning too, kind of the same time that you went there, and they basically said that they didn't want to put, like, too much, set too many goals now, knowing that the input from the community was going to be coming soon. So set kind of that strategic planning goal, set a student achievement goal, and then said, "We'll look at it again when we get the community's input." So I just wanted you to kind of have a different, you know, another perspective on this, but wanted you to look at, you know, last year's goals, and then kind of talk and think about where we want to go this year, based on some of the things that we talked about in the board self-evaluation, and then just some of the areas that are of interest to the board.
I actually was wondering about what you just said, I mean, do we set goals when we're about to set the strategic planning? But you said in your presentation that it's about seven months till we have...
Everything done with the action plans and everything, so...
So that's actually gonna be after even budgeting, right?
Depends how quickly the process, you know, you can shorten the timeline, but that's kind of an average timeline, but...
But, yeah, that's not enough time for somebody to work towards goals when we're gonna evaluate them five months after that, so...
Right, and that's the challenging part, is okay, if you're starting the superintendent evaluation process, and like May, then you need to have some concrete things to...
Well, and we also, the district needs to be working towards something for the next seven months, other than creating a strategic plan.
Right, right, so that's why that, this particular district said, okay, student achievement then is where we're going to put our focus, and, you know, set a student achievement goal and a strategic planning goal. But, you know, like I said, we need to, to look at what, where it is that you want to go as a district, and I know that you also received some draft goals, right, from the superintendent, so I don't know if you had the opportunity to... Now, those I don't have copies of.
That I have up in front of me.
Okay.
We got that sent to us. Just open your email account, it's sitting right there.
So I'm not sure, maybe I can just hang this on a wall, right? I'm sorry, what?
Can you just hang the handle off of one of those retaining wires? I don't know if it's strong enough.
That's not strong enough, then it's not strong enough.
No, no, the handle on the board.
Clip it on, but I think we got it.
Because it's cardboard.
Cardboard, and it'll rip like the other side.
Exactly.
I got you now. I wasn't following.
That's okay.
No, apparently it didn't work for what it was supposed to work for already.
A bunch of binder clips.
Nope, Charlene has them.
Already, already there's one.
Nancy, exactly.
To the rescue, right? Thank you so much. Okay, so let's talk about then, we said, okay, you know, we want to make sure that the goals represent the vision of the board, or what it is that's important to the board. What are those areas? You mentioned some in the board self-evaluation, so what are those areas that you think need to be the focus of the district for the year?
I think focusing on student achievement to begin with, which I think is most important. I think what came out in the board self-evaluation was the students in the middle, so to say. And we focus a lot on our special education programs, which we still need to focus on, but also we focus on our high-level students, but, you know, looking a little more at those students in the middle, and what we could do to, to support them.
We've done a lot of work on the honor, but like you said, on both sides, on those programs and...
And not that we haven't done work for the students in the middle, maybe it's just a perception, I don't know.
Well, you know, and even in our, the curriculum committee, you know, and one of the reasons we talked with, we talked with Dr. Cullis at the curriculum meeting, because she wasn't gonna be here tonight, and, you know, she, she mentioned it too, she said, you know, there's definitely an opportunity to refocus to that middle area. So, I mean, I, you know, I think, I think a focus on curriculum, a focus on program that touches on that majority of the students, I think has, I think there's opportunities there for us.
Okay. Anything else on your student achievement?
This is the first planning session thing I've been involved with, because I'm new to the whole school board thing. It seems to me that student achievement is, I don't know, it seems like it's too wide a goal, we're not really focusing down on anything. I mean, okay, the students, students in the middle, that's a good start, but, I mean, are the goals that we're trying, that we're trying to set here, are they supposed to be kind of broad-based things, or are they supposed to be like, tight, like, tight, small things?
They are usually just the goal statements themselves are more broad-based, because we don't really have the expertise to make them that tight, and then the tightness comes in the action plan. So right now, we're giving the superintendent direction on what it is that we want accomplished for next year.
Well, and in looking at what was given to us as possible district goals, it looks like at least three of them would easily fall under student achievement.
Six, seven, and eight.
Bless you.
Yes, six, seven, no.
And again, just to have it kind of out there, you were talking about expanded intervention programs, the RTI in Orton-Gillingham, implement new updated academic programs, including social studies, math, K through five, writer's workshop, grade six, and then plan and expand a foreign language program at our middle school.
And seven and eight in specific would be aimed at everybody and the middle.
Ten also.
And six is sort of more helping your struggling, right, students?
Correct.
So, I mean, if we set something as broad as student achievement, then they come back with all three of those nestled under it?
Yeah, and Steve's point is ten touches on it, whether or not we decide we're gonna have a separate goal around technology, we could talk about that, but, I mean, you know, ten could also kind of fall into that mix in a way.
And that's also for all kids.
Sure. Just to touch on that for a second, I, I think technology, in particular the first year, we're gonna initiate a one-to-one Chromebook. I think, in my opinion, you have one chance for first impression, I would like to see a goal that's focused on that. I know it's a little bit late in the game, considering we're a couple weeks away from starting the school year, but I think in my opinion, it's, it's, it's important enough to me to have it as a separate goal potentially.
Does Wes and the board agree?
If we're already doing it, does it make sense to have it as a goal? I mean, we're, we're doing this, we've already, we've already got the Chromebooks, they're already being, they've already been mostly, I think, at this point, set up, and they're, it's, we're doing it, it's, I don't, is that a, is it appropriate for that to be a goal? I mean, it's, it seems, since we're already doing it, if we're looking for, like, a place to focus, it shouldn't, should it be something we're already doing?
Well, what was the thought of it on here?
For May? Well, it's a big undertaking, it's been something that we've been planning for two years, had to do the infrastructure things first, we've accomplished that, and now we're at the points where things can actually be in kids' hands. I think it's, it has taken up a tremendous amount of resources in the district financially and time-wise, for the administrative team and for teachers, learning and PD. I think it's, I think it's something that, like you said, we are doing it, but it's a, it's a big goal for the district, it's been something we've been setting the, setting the stage for, for a few years.
And I read this a little differently, Dave, than you did, I think. I mean, I read this as, you know, we've all seen technology that's getting thrown into people's hands, whether it's staff or kids, and then that's it, there's no follow-through. To me, this, this goal was about the follow-through. This was about expanding the use of it, making sure the use of it's correct, all of those things that are gonna follow on, the kids just getting the Chromebook. So I read it that way.
Okay, then we should, then we should word it that way.
Agreed, and that gets to the point, I think, we talked about earlier, the fact that we want to be clear about our understanding of that goal, so that the administration can be clear about what they're gonna do.
Yeah, I definitely, I agree that it's, that it's been a huge undertaking, and I'm not criticizing the undertaking, I just, I'm trying to figure out if, just trying to make sure that it's a goal that, it's a good goal, it's one that's achievable, it's one that we can measure, you know, it's, it's not just something that's kind of nebulous and we can't really say, "Oh, yeah, we definitely did this," or, "No, we didn't do this," it's kind of like, eh, well, we sort of did it. I want to make sure that the, that the goals are, you know, good goals.
I think, I think they're, yeah, but I think they're always gonna be, I hate to say this, but if implementation of a program is gonna be, it's very hard to evaluate in a lot of ways, that's why we gotta make sure it's data-driven, because you may hear an anecdotal story that somebody never opened their Chromebook all year, and, you know, we're always gonna hear these anecdotal stories, and that's why we have to base it upon data that we receive, and maybe we need to focus that in the goal, and say we want data backup to be able to prove what it was. But I, I agree with Dino, I mean, the last two years we spent, how do we get, physically get this in a student's hand? Now, getting it in their hands is, has been a big financial undertaking and a big administrative, but how they use it now is way more important than getting it in their hands from a student achievement perspective, because if they don't use it appropriately, and if the teachers aren't pushing to use it, and the kids aren't excited about using it, then it's gonna, it's basically just a waste of $70,000 every year that we're spending, so. That's, and I agree with you, Dave, we definitely don't want to set it as just implement and start using Chromebooks, because that would be a goal that's like, duh, we're already doing that, but how do we do it? I would see it the same way.
Right, this is not a set it and forget it kind of thing, we have to follow up on it, and also, we're gonna learn things from how they're, how they're using it, how our staff's using it, and how the, how the students are using it. So I think there's an important feedback element to this too, like you said, getting data back in terms of how's it really being used, does it meet our expectations, where are things breaking down, or where are they, where are they exceeding?
So do we see it as something big enough that we would want it as a separate goal? Or do you think...
If we're going to go with training and a couple of other things that were mentioned, I would have no problem with it being a goal. If we're just going to say, expand the use of technology in the classroom, that's too nebulous for my taste.
But, yeah, I mean, I think we can certainly talk about the wording of it and how it's worded and, you know, that kind of stuff, but do, but do you see it as something you would want to see as a separate goal, or under student achievement?
I think I'd rather see that as a separate goal. I mean, that's me, I'm one person on the board, so...
Barb, the right, the right side's been dominating here, do you have any...
Or the left, if from Nancy's point of view.
Well, I'm gonna go, yeah. I had to go with my right.
Without giving too much away, I really like number two, which spells out a technology goal, I really like that one, I think it's worded well.
What's number two?
There were issues, it says, ensure the technology is both capable and reliable in all areas within the district, opposite areas. So last, when we did the park stuff, we had outages, we had spots that weren't working, we had, then we talked about teacher development, even though they have the information, not all teachers are created equal, we have, we know who the amazing ones are, and so there's room in professional development, there's room in the physical spaces for improvement, and then how are you applying it to improve student achievement? Just 'cause you have it doesn't mean it's effective, David pointed. So it does deserve its own goal.
Barb, where'd you get that?
It's the last page of the...
Oh.
Yes, I, it took me a minute, I'm like, where is she reading from? And then I flipped back to the board self-evaluation, and it's the first person's number two. I don't, I guess as the only person who doesn't read it, I am fine with making it its own goal, I'm not sure, although I like this wording better than the one that was in our draft. Are we, are we wanting to, both the one in the draft and this one sort of covers all technology in the district, so in the action plans will we, if you want to make sure you also know about this new initiative? And we will get progress towards goals in time for budgeting to know, like you said, I mean, I don't know that we should blindly go down the rabbit hole of another 70K and another 70K without knowing that we trained the staff enough, and, I mean, I think, as Steve said, I mean, we've really tried to set it all up properly, make sure our infrastructure is correct, we've done training with the staff, we're not just throwing a Chromebook at them, but, you know, it's not until they start using it in the day-to-day in the classroom that we'll find out that, well, that training really wasn't enough, and what they need is a class of this, or, you know, to make sure it's implemented well, so...
No, I, so I think when you talk about ensure, I think ensuring means that, means that feedback, it means all of that coming back to us in some way, and again, not that...
The days of number two pencils are limited, that's all, so it's gotta infuse everything, it already does, you see the little kids, the little toddlers.
I mean, look, we've had, we've had discussions this year particularly, things like technology with special education, is it being used effectively, how's it being, how's it being all that, how's it being monitored? I mean, these are all things we've talked about, you know, at every level, technology's obviously important, so how broadly we write, or how broadly we think about this, you know, I think that's the question.
I, I happen to agree pretty strongly with Mariana that this is a huge cost.
Well, it's a huge cost, and I'm concerned when we write a goal, and I understand, we're doing the what? We want, the what we want is that the technology we're putting in the hands of students is having an educational impact. Then the action, a positive, yes, you're correct, a positive educational impact. You know, then it comes down to the action plans. I don't want to be sitting here next May... I don't want to be sitting here next May and there's nothing in there about Chromebooks or the sixth-grade initiative, or technology being used for special education to make sure that it's out of the box before January, you know.
That's where I think.
It's in the action plans, but we only accept them, but.
But this discussion, I think, should give the direction, right? That's the point, that's the point.
That's the point.
So, we're talking about, like you said, the implementation, right? And you want it to have a positive impact on student achievement, right? And then what are some of the areas, then, that you've talked about that you want to make sure are incorporated?
Well, I would agree with what's, you know, put in the draft, you know, recommended goals to us. We need feedback on how the Chromebooks are doing, how the Google app suite, that, I mean, it's not really the first time they're using Google apps, but it's more broad-based? Or is it really the first?
No, I mean, it's done, but it's not done on a grade level. Everybody's going to do it all the time.
So, I mean, if this is an opportunity for us to talk about some of the specific things, I think, like Mariana said, Chromebooks, but I think the other area that certainly came up a lot last year was use of technology in special education. So, if we're going to leave a very broad-level goal, but talk specifically on some bullets that are opportunities that we would like to see as a board, I think that's another.
Yeah, because, I mean, I don't think we should have a district goal that focuses only on one grade, so.
Okay, so we have, but the technology, you know, the goal will be more on the implementation and its positive impact on student achievement. Some of the areas that we would like to see as part of this goal would be the use of the Chromebooks, the Google apps, and its impact on special education.
Okay.
Okay, we have two. Now, we also know that the strategic plan goal that we set last year was a two-year goal, so we know that that will also continue, so this year will be the second year of that goal. I don't know if there's anything more that the board wants to add to that, to that goal, or any thoughts to make sure are included in it?
I think, in part, that's one of the goals that I think, Mariana, we were talking about, that maybe the disconnect between what we thought it was going to be and what the, kind of, the metrics were in terms of meeting it, where there was a disconnect. I think maybe that was one where we were looking at it a little differently. So, maybe that does bear a little more discussion about what that second year of this is going to look like from our point, you know, what do we see that this being the second year? Maybe, maybe it's easier because it's a much more defined process, so maybe, you know, maybe we should have done.
See it through till the end.
Wow.
Yeah, there's a, so.
It should be, it should be from the planning phase to approving the actual strategic plan.
I guess the first year was the tough year of being fuzzy, this is much more, there's a goal.
Yeah, this year, the goal, if you don't have a, if you don't have a document at the end of, it hit me the goal, a little bit different.
Okay, so knowing that we have those three goals, is there any other area that the board would like to have included as a district goal? Are we comfortable with these three? We typically have, uh-huh?
Don left me some notes. He made a note about not, like, looking, revisiting the website. I was thinking, I might fit under the, if you want to communicate the strategic plan or, or the technology, but just the communicate, the website itself, he thought it would be a nice thing to consider.
Well, there will be, there will be a webpage just for the strategic plan, is that, do you mean that or just overhaul of the website?
He just said redo website, so.
I think he means overhaul altogether.
But, I mean, I'm thinking, if we have, maybe one of the sub-goals would be the communication piece of it.
That's, we're having a side conversation, which we shouldn't do, but we were just talking about that, kind of, community relations, if I was, we were going to have a fourth goal, and we're talking about having a community relations communications goal, who's being an additional one, I don't know how many feels about that, but.
I'd have to understand what that means.
Hope you look at it, it looks like, it looks like number five in the list of possible goals is a improved district communications, and you have things on here, I don't know, I guess.
So, I mean, for me personally, we had improved communication, didn't we? Where is that?
We, number five.
No, this current year.
You had number two.
We had number two last year, and in the end, it was one that, for me personally, you know, just creating a Twitter account and tweeting out, I forget how many, I mean, Steve did do it, and he did tweet out a lot of things, and he got, or through his initiative or setting the example, all of our schools also started Twitter accounts, and, but when we discussed it last year, that wasn't what I had in my mind. I had more like what Don, you know, that Barb just brought up, that Don said. I mean, I thought for years we needed to, and it's not necessarily fix our website, but fix especially our teacher websites. I did a survey, you know, random sampling of them. I mean, in some years, the teachers don't change them from the greetings in September, you can go in in May and they still all have fall leaves, and, you know, I would like to see that aspect of the communication with parents on a, easily when they get home from work and there's nobody in the school to call, you know, way to find out, you know, what's going on with their kids, what they're learning about in the classrooms, what their homework assignments are, some kind of standardized, not, and in my time on the board, we've tried to take this undertaking before, and we still don't have a uniform provider, some teachers use our website, some teachers use other things, and, I mean, so for me, that would have been a more meaningful communication with parents about their students.
I agree with that, I think, I have three kids in the district, all three teachers use different communication methods, I've got, which, some of them are great, and I want teachers to have that ability to do what they think is best, but we as a district, I think, need to, certain people use their websites, some of them don't, some have their own websites on other servers, and it's kind of all over the place, and maybe it doesn't come down to what they want to do, maybe we as a district aren't providing the resources that they feel are adequate, so that's why they're trying to find other resources. So, is there a way for us to, I mean, I'd like to see us, you know, I'd like to see a new website, potentially, Steve, you even talked about an app, I think that's a great idea, that's a way, I mean, nobody opens up a website anymore, I think.
Well, that's part of it, and we keep saying website, but has time passed that by? I mean, you know, right, isn't, you know, should we be looking at an app?
Well, Steve sent us a demo of the app he's working on.
That was one of the goals too, that were, you know, for this next year to implement an app. So, we are going to have an app up and running, and it can achieve some of the things that you're talking about, it's not, it's not going to be a cure-all for everything, but I think some of the things that we're talking about are, have been on the horizon, and, but there are other, really, other pressing issues that we wanted to handle first. So, it is something that we've been talking about and planning, the app was for this year, and the website changes we were thinking about for next year.
And that's something we need to consider too, when we're looking at a goal, we can't give a goal that we haven't budgeted for and is a huge budget item number that cannot be accomplished, I don't think that's fair to anybody, so we may have to consider that. I still think, when we talk about communication and community relations, I still think Facebook is where most people are, and I still think, I know Steve and I have had this conversation a bunch of times about it, I think that is an area where we need to be, because in my opinion, you either control the conversation there or you let the conversation control you, and we let other people answer, and, yeah, and tell everybody about what we're doing, and sometimes that's correct and sometimes it's not. You can't control everything, but, you know, there's a certain amount of, if you're out there providing more information, people feel a lot more comfortable, and if you're not providing, if you say, here's the link to our website, who's going to click on it? If you say, here's the information and we're out there ahead of it, I think we could be a lot more ahead of things if we are communicating in the way people want to be communicated with, and you're right, they don't want emails, they don't want, you know, for work, I've told people, don't email me anymore, it's just, that's, it's like snail mail from 10 years ago, I mean, it's just, nobody looks at it anymore, so you got to figure out the way that people want to be communicated with, it's apps, it's Facebook, it's things like that, so I think we need to figure out ways to get more creative and get ahead of the curve.
But I think in addition to that, you know, one of the things that is, I've also heard other boards talk about this, is you have to make sure that you kind of have one central point too, you know, that some boards will say it's confusing to, you know, we send them to our website, we send them to the Facebook, we send them to the email, we send them here, instead, we need one place where people go to, to get our message and get our information, and so where is that place? Where do they get that? You know, how do they get that information? And also, as a board, you know, all of your conversation right now has been about the parents in your school district, you know, as a board, you're responsible for your entire community, as kind of a general rule of thumb, only 20% of your community has children in your district, the other 80% do not, you're equally responsible to those other 80%. So, how do you as a board communicate your message and communicate what you're doing? Because, I mean, what you're saying is absolutely right, that, you know, we say that the role of communication from a board should be changing and considered to be community leadership, and that you should be the ones putting the message out there, instead of you responding to what the community's saying, the community should be getting its information from you and not you responding to what you're hearing from them. So, how you put all those pieces together to work best for you, you have to take all of that into consideration.
I do think it's important, what Charlene just said about you can't send people to five different places. It's unfortunate, I think, because it is equally true, and for at least five years, we have parents running Facebook pages in the names of each of our three schools, and that has become the source of information for most parents, which is why what, I think it was Mike said, to me has been so important, we're letting somebody else define our message, it's not us at all, and no matter how much we point them to our website, which was, you know, really, when this discussion started for me on the board, you know, five years ago, was before apps were as prevalent as they are today, before everybody had a computer in their pocket, and I don't know, I know in my time on the board, during one of our previous strategic plans, fixing the website came up, and we created a focus group and brought in the community to tell us what they wanted out of it. I mean, I don't know if it'll authentically rise through the strategic plan, how people want to be communicated with or not. I mean, I don't know if we know.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, you know, again, my personal experience has been that it's like flavors of ice cream, everybody wants to be communicated with differently, and in my business, I deal with people who want to, who talk to me on chat one minute, email the next minute, the phone the minute after that, and, you know, these are tend to be younger people, but they don't really care about which method it is, they'll grab the one that's closest of hand, so I think we're going to see a lot of that. So, I understand what you're saying, Charlene, but at the same time, we can't limit ourselves to one central point, because it, we're going to basically bleed off people to all of these other, all these other media, because they're just not going to have the patience to go to that one official source, so we have to.
Sorry.
That's all right.
As I understand the issue, and my, my young, my oldest started in the school district five years ago, right about the time they started the Facebook thing, the reason that the Facebook sites have become so prevalent is because of, because of mutually conflicting information at various locations on the school website. When somebody types in, you know, Denville School District calendar, and all the, and all the results come up, it, the Google doesn't differentiate very well between the newest and the oldest, they just show up what's most popular, and if it's the one that's been hit the most times, it happens to be the old one, that, as I remember correctly, the issue was, this year, was that whoever put it up on the, on the, the one that was causing the problem, the post didn't have, didn't have the end date put in. So, a simple, a simple whoops like that led to a whole lot of confusion and, and a whole lot of time spent by a whole lot of people going back and forth trying to figure out what was what. And it seems to me the root, the root problem when there's confusion, at least for not teacher websites, but for school announcements, for district announcements, that kind of stuff, we need to figure out a way to have the school website be the source, and then the people, and a source that is impeccable, that you're not going to have issues like that. And, you know, forgetting to put in the end date of something, it was, it was a slip-up. There's, you, it's a mistake, it's not, it's not like someone went out of their way to do it on purpose, it was a mistake, and if we can't figure out a way to make the website that is a little bit less prone to that kind of mistake, we're never going to be able to, no matter what we, no matter what particular method we choose to communicate with people, we're still going to be making mistakes, and we're still going to screw it up, and people are still going to go to their other places to find stuff that they think is better, and, I mean, people want to talk to each other.
Oh, and that's the nature, I mean.
They want feedback soon, and the people who have been running these websites happen to be fairly dedicated, and they put a lot of time into it. I mean, one of the objections that Steve had last year, when we first started about this, was that if we set up a Facebook site, we were going to have to dedicate somebody to monitoring it all the time, and I don't know if that's still a concern, but that's a lot of money. But anyway, my point was, before I started to ramble, we have to make sure that our website is right before we start opening up all these other things, going to all these other locations.
Can I ask you a question, Charlene? I was just going to say, we need to kind of come back to what might be a goal, so go ahead.
Well, this may not help, but you said, you said that we should realize that only, what was it, 20% of?
In an average community, yeah.
And we don't even house K to 12 students, so we have an even smaller age group of kids as our demographic, so I think that's probably fair. Do you know how other districts typically communicate with the 80% of the people that don't have kids in their buildings?
Everybody is kind of gassed.
Okay, I just wondered, because we've changed and evolved through my 10 years on the board, from when we used to, you know, put something in every single citizen's mailbox to now basically using only our electronic versions of things, which I would say there's a demographic in town over, probably, it's fair to say, over a certain age, that will never look for us anywhere, not on a app or a website or.
We do a lot of press releases now, and that's why we have a pretty big presence in the neighbor news and Citizen and the Tap, because we, I, as a resident of the town, I realized, it seemed like there wasn't coverage of Denville's K-8, but now, pretty much every week, there's something in there, maybe not every week, but probably 80% of the time, there's some kind of art from our school.
Well, and at least for the stuff that's in the neighbor news, that's something that ends up in everybody's mailbox.
It does.
You don't have to go looking for it.
And it does hit that demographic you're talking about, that aren't going to go electronic.
I mean, Dave, to your point, and I don't want to keep feeding this, but I think it's worth mentioning, is that the website, unless you're willing to put in a lot of checks and balances and almost an editor to edit our website, there's always going to be mistakes, there's always going to be things that are not going to be on the website, and then you have a credibility gap, you have a confidence gap, people aren't going to go to it because they don't feel like the information is up to date or correct. The nice thing about social media is that it's crowdsourced, right? If I put out something that isn't quite correct, two seconds later, somebody helps fix that for me, somebody says, oh, no, that's not the right calendar, this is the right one. We don't have that capability necessarily to do it ourselves, so we could almost kind of embrace the chaos of social media in a way and say, we are going to put our stuff out on the media, and let people help us correct, let people help us keep it up to date and correct, because that is part of the power of it, so.
Yeah, and the replies from the people when they do, when they do put, say, there is the day where, where there was, the old calendar was out, not the revised version, revised version was a different spot, this was in a news thing, it wasn't, it wasn't about not having an expiration, it should have just been deleted. So, I noticed, I don't have Facebook, I go on my wife's to stalk it, because I don't have it, but I will if this is what the board's direction is.
Lurk, lurk.
Right, exactly, and when I saw that, somebody mentioned that there was a mistake, I went on to thing and fixed it, like, right away, so, yeah, there is part of that, you don't want that to be so much that we're making so many mistakes and people are correcting us all the time, but for the occasional thing like that.
It's self-correcting.
Yeah, and the people were, the responses were, oh, thank you, you know, it wasn't like, wow, you guys really can't do it. It wasn't like, wow, you guys really can't do any of this stuff. It was like, you know, they made a comment, it was corrected, thank you.
The, the most amount of positive comments I, I ever get about board business is when I post something on Facebook just about the budget process or whatever, and I will tell you, I get phone calls, text messages, messages back being like, thank you for getting that information out, so helpful. I mean, it's always, it's almost always a positive comment back. It's just getting the information out, I think, sometimes and being in front of it. Because sometimes people just have that natural tendency to think, if you're not saying it and it's not in front of them, then you're hiding something.
It didn't happen.
Yeah, yeah, or you, what are they trying to do? What's the-
All right, so I think to Charlene's point, it sounds like the majority of the board wants a, and I don't know what you write on that paper.
Okay.
Um, an improved district communications. Wait, is that what we want? From our, uh, from our, from our draft goals?
Personally, I don't think we pigeonhole it to be an improved website necessarily. It could be, part of it could be that in some form or another. Could be an app, could be more social media, it could be something. But it, it's going to be a miss.
I think you want another in the strategic plan, like just what is the community looking to get? Like what information, you know?
It should be a bunch, it should be a big question for our strategic plan. We really should be looking for that kind of, definitely.
And how can we best do it in a cheap-
But at least until, at least, you know, because we have time.
I think in myself, if you and Mike and if all of a sudden, now you're having a meeting on one, like, I don't know if you want to go there. Like, you'd have to limit the amount of participation on said thing.
For, I'm sorry, I meant-
Social media. Like, if it's an official school thing and we're all, like, chatting on it, that's a meeting.
Well, that's an interesting.
I don't want to go there.
That is an interesting question.
That is an interesting little sub quote, you know? I mean, obviously, we-
We're not chatting to district administration. Yeah, it would be an administrative-
Yeah, but you just said you went on and posted and, well, it's right, you have to be careful.
Yeah, but we send emails to groups of people that say something about what happened on the district. I mean, it was, it was an announcement, just this happened, I mean.
Okay.
Okay, so do we, do you want the goal, the way it's written as number five, to improve district communication? And under that, then, will be different types of communication? Is that what I'm hearing, or?
I think that's what I'm saying, like, you know, is that what you, that what you guys are understanding?
Right. We, I think we were having the discussion because you said that's where the action plans will come from. So I don't know if we've touched all the bases of what improving communication means to all of us.
Have you, from this discussion, gotten, gotten a feeling of, I mean, and it's been very disjointed.
Yeah. But it does say, it says, what, I mean, I wrote what I thought, that expand from, not ju, not eliminate, but we still use Constant Contact, YouTube, Twitter, and then add to Facebook as another option, to see if this makes a difference and improves. We're already doing the app, that was a goal from last year, and it's going, it's going to be introduced on September.
Well, I would like to see added on here, you know, website then.
Well, and maybe this is, maybe this is a, a, a point where we need to kind of leave it open-ended to say, determine, so maybe it's a, maybe it's a survey you sent out to a larger stakeholder than the seven of us up here, or larger stakeholder than just the 20% of parents, but maybe we can get something out that's a large survey to say, how do you want to hear from the, the, the school district? And then from there, you can build a plan. I mean, it should be pretty easy to set something up, a quick survey of some options on how to do that. I mean, is that, I mean, maybe, maybe it's a, one of the districts I had pulled up had goals and objectives. So maybe a goal is kind of very, very broad, the objective's a little more focusing on what we're looking for out of that goal. It doesn't tell you how to do it, but it's a little bit more, you know, I, I'll give you a quick example. Uh, one of these, it's not very long. Goal is provide professional development for all instructional staff in order to adjust the instructional practices to align with blah, 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 blah. Objective, continue to provide professional development opportunities for English, language, arts, and mathematics. It's a little more specific, it's still not telling you how to do it, but it's telling you more than just the very broad-
Well, I think that's what Steve lists in ours as steps.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be fair to say?
Yeah, sure.
One of the things that we should probably consider in the committee meeting, we talked about training and, and training on Genesis, which is the, as I understand it, it's the program we use to communicate stuff directly to parents and-
Genesis is your student information system, like, where you can, we do communicate some things, like your child's teacher, your child's bus stop, but we don't use it for email as a rule.
No, but we use it for grades, grade book.
Yeah, and when we were in the committee meeting, we said that we don't use anywhere near all of the capacity, all, sorry, all the capabilities of it. And that's something we may want to look into, expanding training on that because it's something we already have, we already own it, we just figure out how to do it, and maybe that will help solve some of the issues that we are currently looking at as far as district communications go.
Okay. So you want that as kind of a, as, like, the sub-bullet under communications? We have Facebook, right? We talked about the app, we talked about the website.
Genesis.
Genesis, and now, like, a survey or a method of finding out how to best reach, right?
If you were going to, if you were going to talk about a projective, in my mind, you would talk, I would give them this, I would say, find the best multi-platform method of communicating with our parents or, and our community in, in an interactive way. And, and forget, forget exactly which ones, whether it's Facebook, whether it's website, whether it's an app. I think it's going to be a combination of all of those personally, but I don't necessarily want to pigeonhole it that closely.
And I, I'll be honest with you, those are, those are all four very big things to take on. I mean, some of them easier than others, but, you know, I mean, trying to use Genesis more requires, you know, training for our staff and policies and procedures, there's, there's a lot in there. And I agree with Dino, we, we need, I would want Steve to figure out, based upon some data, what is the feedback on what are the best communication methods?
I don't disagree with not making him do everything, but to find out how people want to be heard from. But I think if we as a district want to embrace what Genesis has to offer, nobody out there in the community at large is going to tell us that. And we have to make that decision because it's been years now, I've been hearing that we're not using it, and we were going to train staff, like, especially around, I think, and I guess now you're saying it is our student information system, but, you know, I think the nursing staff was doing something in another program and then it didn't talk with this program. I mean, if we want to embrace Genesis, I think we're going to have to say, we're going to embrace Genesis, and what training do we need to provide to staff to make that happen?
So leave, so leave that separate?
That's me personally, I'm, I'm just talking out loud here. I just, it's been years now, I keep hearing that Genesis has so much more it offers than we utilize. In committee meetings for, predating Steve being here, but the whole time he's been here, so it's not going to just happen unless we decide.
But, and, and, and I think we have done some of that, right? I mean, like, you know, two, was it, two years ago, I guess, I got a postcard that had my kid's bus stop on it. Now, they tell me on August 17th, I can go on there and find out where my kid's bus stop is on Genesis. So it's baby steps in some ways, but you gotta, you gotta crawl before you walk. So I think we're doing it more, and I'm certainly, my kids are all elementary age, and I know they use it more in the middle school, so I, I agree, though. I, I, you're right, you're a very good point.
And I wasn't at this year's, I wasn't at this year's committee meeting to know what our next baby step was, but-
We also didn't print out report cards for K-5 this year, which was the first time for the last marking period, to keep, people had to go on, log on and view their report card, which is, like you said, a baby step, but it's also getting people used to actually having to go on, because before that, you didn't really need to. But if you had a K-5 kid, you did, you got a little card in the mail, you got a letter saying where your kid's teacher was, and you got a report card. Now, we don't do any of those three things. So we're getting people used to, if you need to know X, Y, Z, this is where you look.
Yeah.
Okay, so then the way the communication goal will be then is took off the specific things, except for leaving Genesis, because that's its own separate area, and then the other part of the goal will be to determine how to reach the, the stakeholders and then, you know, use those methods to determine to be most effective. Okay, everybody good with those then as four goals then for this year? Okay? Good. Then the next step in the process would be the board determining-
This is the time, either, either you are ready or not.
Oh, I said that last year.
Well, that's the point, we're not punting, right? This is not, this is not the year to punt.
This is not the year to punt.
Okay, so then have the board for its own goals. What are things that the board would like to focus on? You can look at the things that you had for last year and see if you want to continue any of, I know that you, you had reevaluate the board's outreach, begin the certification process, you're not who began it, you attained it, right?
We accomplished that.
And determine the future location of the board office.
So number three, we should probably keep on there?
We're still in the-
But we need progress.
I don't know that you should say determine the location, but, but-
Come to a, a final, I don't know.
Solidify the Board of Education offices. I don't, yes.
When's the lease up, Steve?
It's up in, it's up June 30th.
This coming, 2017.
So we really have to determine location. We're either staying there or we're not. I mean, that's, this is the one year we can definitively say-
Okay, so the word determine the location is fine. I don't, yes, I think the-
It's still appropriate.
How long does that certification we did last?
Three years.
Thank you.
But there are things that we can do during those three years to-
Yes, because the reason we were able to achieve the goals-
All, all the things, and then we're done, right?
Well, and there are different, you can move on to the next level of certification.
That's right.
You just got recertified, then there is a master board that you could accomplish after that, and that requires getting 10 more hours, based on how long we're going tonight, right?
We're almost here.
Marry out as a master board member.
Oh, it's good. I need a full set of luggage, so if we become a master board, then I'll get more luggage.
Carry on, carry on, peace.
Um, one of the things, one of the things I thought was really, really helpful was the board's self-evaluation. So I know we had 100% participation this year, but we want to make it a goal to have 100% participation in that process. I mean-
Boards do that as a goal, and not only the board's self-evaluation, but the superintendent's evaluation, make sure that there's 100% participation of those eligible board members involved.
Which, which this year we didn't need.
I think that's a great goal.
I like that.
I think we should always have 100% participation in both of those two items.
I like that. Barb, again, we're dominating down there.
Yes, and it means-
Anything else?
Do you want to put staff recognition?
Possibly, Mike's suggestion about increasing staff recognition?
Or, or board attendance at school activities increase.
Or your finance training at big meetings.
Well, that's a good one. Oh, I like that.
Considering you've been my sub, I'm not sure why I'm the one bringing that up.
Um, I like all of those personally, I mean, I, I think they're, they're all decent.
Okay, improve board attendance.
Period.
At, at community events, board events.
Do you want that as your next, as another goal?
I'm in favor of that one.
I think that's a great goal.
I was going to say, I stole it off somebody's comment here on the-
Since Don's not here, we can nominate him for all the attendance at all the events.
At school and community events?
Mm-hmm. And boards.
And-
And boards, you know, are we talking about our meetings, our committee meetings, our-
Sure.
Okay.
Across the board.
That was terrible.
I thought you would need a baseline.
Well, we have attendance, Chuck.
I think we have pretty, pretty good attendance at these meetings.
Yeah, for the most part. Our committee meeting's been spotty. I think that was some of the comments we gave ourselves, right? Our committee, our committee attendance hasn't been terribly great.
I mean, I know my real paying job, I'm not going to be in the, some of the day things, I mean, so it depends on how crazy I'm not like-
We all, you know, this is, this is a goal to improve, obviously within-
As a team.
Within the structure of, right, exactly. I think it's a good team, I mean, I think it's a great team goal.
All right, don't shame the underachiever.
Okay, everybody good with those three then? So we have the, the board office, we have the 100% participation, both the board and the superintendent's evaluation, and then the improvement in board attendance at board school and community events.
Can I just add one more thing, not as another goal, but just something I noticed on one of the presentations, I think, was school goals. So specifically, and this is just feedback to Steve, that might be something we might want to, I don't know how the other board members feel about it, but using the district goals and getting down to what the, how the school, each individual school is implementing those goals, because obviously how they implement that, the elementary schools may be different than how they implemented at Valley View, or here, particularly in the technology realm, for instance. So is that something, I, I don't want to add more work to the administration, but do they, are they already doing that? It would just be a matter of just communicating it to us what their specific goals are to hit those district goals?
They have different types of goals. So they have the goals that come from this, and because they're broad, there are some, like, like a student achievement goal. For example, how about, how about just the, the foreign language? That's, that's an easy example. One of the, one of the board, one of the goals for that team will be to investigate and come up with a plan of how to implement a different, an enhanced foreign language program, something like that. So there, those kinds of goals are already being done. Now, they are taken from, they are taken from this, like, loosely, like I just said, so, but that one's pretty specific, that's going to be in there about improving the, or investigating, improving that. Yeah, so then they, they also have, they have to have two goals for your evaluation, too. And we try to tie them as closely to the district goals as possible. They do have to be measurable, they have to be towards student achievement, things like that.
Okay.
Yep.
I think we're done, right?
Oh, we thank you for staying in there.
Thank you very much.
Now we can start the actual-
You put in a, yeah.
Thank you, Charlene.
You put in a good night tonight, thank you very much.
You were going to send me a document like you did last year, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know. I already put down the line you go with. Improvising something, right? Thank you for your help, too.
Right. Charlie, thank you again.
Thank you, Charlene.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, well, moving on to superintendent's comments, which I'm assuming will be on the brief side.
Yes. I'm in the process of working out the lease terms. I will share the draft lease with the board on Friday, and we will continue to have talks with the town about the lease for the building to use, to utilize for a section of the building on the second floor for our board office. I do want to make sure that the board understands, and the public, too, not that, I, I'm in favor of this move, I think it's the right move for us. I don't think it's ideal, like, perfect situation, because, number one, it doesn't fit all of our people, it does fit seven out of 10. So we will make room for the other three. But considering all the other factors, for example, the fact that our, our rental is costing us $50,000, we'll ramp up to $60,000. We're not really interested in doing any type of major building project, you know, that's going to cost a lot of money and have to go out to a referendum, because I shared with the board my information I received from our, from our architects on the cost of doing such type of construction would require a referendum. So giving all those things, the fact that, you know, it's, it's a, it's a place that we can use, and it's, it's going to be satisfactory for the seven people, it's, it's not ideal this project. But there are definitely negative sides to it, and one of them is not having all 10 of our people in the one spot. And I say this to you because this is going to, I'm sure it will, outlast my reign here, when it's... We're talking about a 25-year lease. I know I won't still be doing this at that time, if I am, I don't know what's going on, but... So I do want to make sure that publicly that we had this discussion, that had this chance to put it out there. I know I've told you exactly what I just said in private, because it's an ongoing legal matter, but I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that although I'm still recommending we continue down the road, it's not the ideal situation for our board office, because it doesn't meet every one of our needs. But considering all of the factors I just said, it's still the move that I feel is responsible and the right move for us now. This... Actually, I wrote these things prior to the discussion we just had about making sure the board's aware of things that are coming up. So our calendar coming up over the next month and a week is September 1 and 2, staff start. The staff convocation will be September 1, and the second day will be PD. We will have an invite to the board, if anybody's interested in coming. It will be held on September 1 at the Honeywell headquarters on Route 53. September 6 is the first day for students in all three schools. The back-to-school nights coming up, our Lakeview is September 14. Riverview is September 22. And Valley View is October 6. concludes my report.
And we have, is the Riverview Playground dedication?
I didn't put it on there, because it's not 100% sure that that's gonna be the date. But once I get the date for sure, I'll send it out. Right now, it was August 31, tentatively. So tentatively, August 31, in the evening, at Riverview, the Riverview Playground will be dedicated, but it's not 100% sure, because we don't have the playground up and done yet.
Okay.
That concludes my statements.
Thank you very much. Was there anything from Dr. Cullis? Did she have anything for us?
No.
Okay. On to Damaris then, is there anything?
No comments for me either.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, at this time, I am going to open for public discussion any items germane to the district at 9:47. Mrs. Woody, if there's anything you'd care to say at all? All right. Well, thank you for coming tonight, as always. I will close also at 9:47, the public portion of the meeting, the public discussion portion, and we will go to old business. Mr. Luer, would you care to move us through these old business items?
I would like...
I would like to move items A and B under old business. We will be approving the treasurer of school monies and board secretary reports from July of this year, and the work regular session minutes from July 18, and the executive session minutes from July 18.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on these items before we vote? If not, roll call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes, on A, and I need to abstain on B, as I was not at that meeting.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Oh, yeah, they skipped right to me. Yes. Okay, moving on to personnel. I am wondering if we should separate out item 3 as a separate item, or should I move them all in one? Is it up to me?
Here, the one moving is a...
Okay. I am going to move items 1 through 8, but excluding item 3 for now. We'll move that separately. We also have addendum items, personnel, under number 1, we have the GGs through MMs, and number 2, we have the addition of B and C. And actually, I'm sorry, we also have 9 and 10. So I'll be moving 1 through 10, excluding number 3.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I'd like to call out under 1... Yes, 1M, the items for the attendee, Orton, Gillingham, reading, this is the two-year certification program, which we talked about in committee as well in August. These are the teachers that will be attending that program over the course of the next two years, and this is funded from Title I funding. Is there anything else anyone wanted to discuss about numbers 1 through 10, except number 3? No? Roll call please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay. That having been done, I would like to move number 3, approve the job description of the strategic plan internal coordinator. Thank you, Barb. Shall we discuss?
Sure.
I thought Charlene's description this evening was helpful, at least in terms of my understanding a little bit more, the idea behind the coordinator in general. I think I was under the misinformation from the... You know, not misunderstanding from the last meeting that they were kind of doing an all-inclusive thing. I didn't really realize the need for kind of having an internal coordinator to move this thing forward. I mean, it makes sense now, when she explained it to us. So in my mind, it really comes down to where do we want to set these resources? Do we want it to be something our CSA does, or do we want to have it be something somebody else does in part or in home? So to me, that's the crux of it.
I was gonna say, I think after listening to her tonight, it's less about the appearance of... Oh, sorry. Of us putting our thumb on it while you want one, it's about allocation of time as a resource.
Right.
Is there any... I'm not sure everybody feels about potentially putting it as a miracle for one of our administrators for professional development. I mean, it's... It would save some money.
Would it save money? Because we were talking about a stipend of $2,000?
Maybe $3,200.
But you would normally assign another miracle for that administrator, correct? Well, I'm talking about one of our administrators already have miracles.
Ah, okay.
You haven't sent any miracles for them yet this year.
Gotcha.
So this would be a miracle that we could potentially set for them.
Okay.
And could be a professional development opportunity for someone, too.
Right.
I'm fine with that. I'm fine with that. It's caused a lot of back and forth, and I think there's questions about it. I mean, I recommended it this way. In the previous time I did it, our person that we hired said they wouldn't even do it with you if you didn't have someone other than the CSA do it. But this is a little different way we're doing it. It's not gonna be exactly the same, it's not as involved as the thing I shared with you. So if that's... If this thing is causing that much turmoil and, you know, uncertainty, let's just scratch it, and then it'll be one of our goals to finish.
Well, let's get it out now. I feel like there's something being unsaid here.
Who will we be making this a...
Well, it could only be Steve or Sandy, I would think.
Yeah. Damaris has it, and Nurse, too, but not necessarily...
I don't think it's... Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you have it as a stipend, there could be someone looking to go the next level, and it'd be an opportunity to try it on.
My only concern about doing it as a stipend for a kind of a lower-level administrator is what we talked about earlier, is the idea that you need to have the weight of the CSA to bring the people we want to have here, and give this the importance it deserves. So the CSA needs to be involved anyway, to what extent? That's my only... That's really where I'm at, in terms of figuring this out.
From the impression that I got was that the CSA basically gets everybody to show up, but the person who this would be aimed at would be the person who does all the detail work, setting up... She mentioned setting up classrooms, I think she said something about snacks, that kind of thing. Basically, the CSA would say, "Everybody come here for this," and all the other details would be handled by this other person. Is that...
Yeah, sure. The CSAT still, I mean, the superintendent leads this.
You have to be involved no matter how we do it.
It's a go-to person to handle some of the other types of administrative tasks that are associated with it.
And also the follow-through after the different meetings, after the... I mean, you're still the guy that's gonna need to draw on the people to come, and you're gonna need to use your personal influence to get, you know, to get them out.
And then the creation of the documents, and the approval of the documents by the superintendent, and then the posting, the creating of the website or the webpage for this. There's, you know, there's other administrative-type tasks that...
Yeah.
It is great experience for a younger, for a lower, on the totem pole guy, you know, or female, to get that kind of experience of doing this.
And, you know, do we want to have our CSA scheduling rooms and doing that kind of work? I don't know. My reaction is no, not necessarily.
But, I mean, I guess the flip side of that is, is a stipend of $2,000 to be scheduling rooms is...
Is maybe more than it needs to be.
So, I mean, but when I mentioned it, I'll be honest with you, I didn't think of it as potentially Steve's miracle, I was more thinking Dr. Cullis, in an opportunity for her to run a program like this. I think she, you know, it may be just an opportunity. She is our assistant superintendent, so she certainly has the high enough, you know, level in the district. She certainly works with the... Obviously, the building personnel would be easy for her to schedule and do whatever she needs to do for administrative tasks, and Steve's already gonna be obviously involved in a significant role in the process also, so that was my thought, but...
And one of her miracles last year was organizing and running the PASS programs, the PASS Academy. So, I mean, this is a... This could be considered a natural kind of additional...
It's outside of kind of... I guess it's not really outside of academics or, you know, curriculum, but it kind of is. I mean, it certainly... If we're not focused on student achievement during this process, then we're missing...
Well, then the mark, right.
So it does kind of fall in, and she is assistant superintendent, so that was my thought.
But that would have to be incorporated in her contract as well, too, for the superintendent.
The county superintendent to be approved.
She can't do... Why can't we...
No, you know what, there's no cap on her salary, though.
But the county has to approve her contract.
They might have to approve some kind of...
But we right now have... We have miracles for her.
Can't just make an miracle.
We haven't...
Oh, yeah, if it's one of the miracles.
No, no, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, we're talking about not stipending...
You were mentioning it being, possibly being assistant superintendent as the coordinator with stipend, no?
No, 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 we were just talking about...
It could be one of the miracles.
We could have her as the coordinator.
County has to approve it, obviously, but that would probably be approved.
Well, a miracle should be something outside your normal job description, and this would be outside her normal job.
I like that idea. You okay with that?
But I don't know if I'm okay with assigning it to her, though. That's my job.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I...
I don't know.
They're gonna be involved anyway, like to guide the process. Don't you want, like... I think, you know, you put out the stipend and see who's interested. She's already proven leadership stuff. I mean, they have to do a certain amount, but you want to stick to the core things.
To me, this is outside of a lot of what she normally does. So when you look at a miracle and you're looking for somebody to kind of reach, I mean, she does a lot with the curriculum and the academics and focusing, this is a big community...
She's set up a lot of community things already.
No, no.
She's got a lot on her plate. I just... They're gonna be involved anyway, that's probably gonna be some sort of goal anyway, but I don't think I would limit it. I don't know. I just, I think there might be people out there looking to become admins and can try it on.
I'm sure there are, it's just a matter of whether we want to spend $2,000 for that, in my opinion.
So, you know, so...
I can't help but thinking that if she was sitting here right now instead of on vacation, she'd be saying, "No, no, no."
I was gonna say, it's not fair to do that when she's not here. I also...
Let's see if she applies.
I don't know. I'm very torn on the whole thing. I do strongly believe that in Steve's... Okay, I need help with the math. Are we finishing up your third year, second year, third year?
Seventh.
Seventh year?
It's starting with yesterday.
Starting your third. See, to me, I feel like you've already been here three years, so then I was second-guessing myself. I mean, you already have so many connections, and the word I couldn't think of, it came to me and now it's gone again, you serve on the district chamber of commerce, right? That was the word I couldn't think of. I mean, so you have connections to the businesses, which was on the list, which would have never occurred to me. That list she put up there was interesting to me. I mean, the PTAs, that was, you know, understandable, trying to get community that's not parents, that's understandable to me, but I think that's gonna be the hard thing for someone else in the district.
Well, that's why I'm...
I mean, you're the natural for that part of it, whether you want to share the... You know, if it became one of your merit goals, it doesn't mean you have to do every piece of it, you don't have to schedule the rooms.
Right. See, you know, and I think to Mike's point and to Maryana's point, I'm wrestling with the... You're the face of the district for this. You give it weight, you give it credibility.
Yeah.
You tell everybody how important it is, and you can bring people here. Now, that being said, if we're gonna give the grunt work piece of it to someone else, then does it bear $2,000 worth of expense? That's what I'm wrestling with.
Right. And, I mean, I agree, I don't think it's a good use of your time, Steve, to be scheduling rooms.
What would people be comfortable with this job description minus recruiting planning team members? I mean, is there... Are we talking 500, 1,000, 1,500?
What are we asking them to do at that point? Just schedule rooms and...
No, I mean, there's a lot more. I did share with you guys a special edition, remember?
Thank you.
Yeah, board report, and all those things, and all the archives, and those other documents that were...
You had a special archive of strategic...
Yeah. A lot of that stuff was done by the internal coordinator. You know, I sit in on it, and I guided it, and I approved it, but she really actually took the ideas and all the stuff and built it.
So they're drafting documents, they're giving them back to you for review, I mean, all of that is... All that's where the...
Creating power points and stuff.
Right. So that's all the grunt... I say grunt, I don't mean it that way. I mean, it's all that, it's all that mechanics that has to get done.
But then this version of the way we're doing it is not as extensive as the one I shared with you. That was a two-and-a-half-day boot camp, like from 8 o'clock in the morning to 5 o'clock at night, you know? Like a retreat, kind of. So it was a totally different setup. This is a few hour-and-a-half meetings at night.
So what...
Now, when I said I was okay with it, I said I was okay with it for me, because I don't want to say this before I even mention it to Sandy, whether or not this is a good use of her time, too.
We wouldn't agree... We can't agree upon that right now. What we could agree upon is that we're not gonna move forward with this.
Right. That's what you have to do, and then...
That's all we've got.
And what will happen then is I will contact Charlene and just start moving on this, because I... There's no time, it's time to move now. This is the absolute end, because I need to start scheduling the meetings, because we're gonna hit the ground running in October. So that's the way it is.
Okay. So, any thoughts on what we do with this?
Well, the motion's on the floor, so at this point, you gotta call the roll, and it either goes down, and that gives Steve the opportunity to...
All right. Does anybody else want to say anything else before I do that?
He's only approving the job description, he's not appointing anybody.
Yeah, but if you approve the job description, I'm not gonna sit here with a person and people vote no. That's after I go out and post his job and offer it to somebody.
No, no, we're voting on...
This is...
This is it.
If you vote, you're voting for this and to hire somebody. If you vote, you're voting for this and to hire somebody.
Yes, if you vote yes for the job description, you want him to...
To go out and hire someone.
Hire someone. If you vote no, you don't...
Want him to do that.
You don't want him to do that.
Then we're either talking about doing miracles later on or, or not, but...
It would be within the district, right?
Yeah, it has to be within the district, that's why it's internal.
Right. All right, does anybody want to say anything else before we vote? Okay. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
No.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
No.
Mrs. Lindsay?
No.
Mr. Capello?
Not that it matters that much. I'm gonna vote yes.
Do not pass.
Can't carry over deemed and, uh, some less. The ghost of Dave.
Okay, moving on to instruction and program. Mrs. Lindsay, would you care to take us through this?
Sure. If no one has any objections, I would like to move motions one through nine as block, also adding one F from the addendum into number one as I move it. Which includes professional development workshops, the bringing in of Jed Baker to provide staff and parent workshops. Number three is also workshops in literacy. Approve the mentor-mentee for the upcoming school year. Approve a contract with Ed Services. Approve the existing curriculum guides for the 2016-17 school year, and to approve the revised K-5 reading and writing curriculum, and approve the revised 6-8 science and science inquiry curriculum, and to approve Matt...
Belachi?
Thank you, I would've never gotten there. To present a show to the sixth-grade students on a positive climate, anti-bullying drug and alcohol awareness in September.
That's funded by Denville Municipal Alliance.
Thank you. You're correct.
I, I was...
By the MAC.
Somebody second?
No, we don't have a second yet.
I will second.
Thank you. I was just filling space so that somebody would step up.
Thank you.
I have a question. The mentor-mentee relationships, those are experienced teachers mentoring younger, less experienced...
New, new to teaching, and new to the district also requires mentees now, right? But it's a different, it's not...
It's another cert, too, right.
It wouldn't be this one, but that also, definitely if you're new to teaching, you get a mentor, and there's, we don't go into it here, but there's usually a fee involved.
Yeah, and if you're a member, Dave, in the committee, we talked about the fact that the mentee pays the fee, but we, as a practice, have been reimbursing them for that, for that fee.
There's no cost to the district because it's a wash between the mentee and mentor.
And this, are, are the mentors...
How is that possible?
The mentee pays, and then the fund gets to the mentor.
But we've...
We're not funding it then, if it's a wash.
But as a practice, we're reimbursing them.
We reimburse this, yes.
We reimburse the mentee. We reimburse the mentee for the fee.
Yeah, yeah. So, there is a cost. In the past, there wasn't. We, I think it was last year when we, we said, "These are the newest teachers in the district, they're already..."
No, it's...
"...the lowest-paid teachers in the district typically." We agreed that we would...
We started that last year.
And I'm gonna assume, I, I will admit, I did miss the committee meeting, because I was away on vacation when it was held. I assume you also went over the curriculum that we're moving tonight.
Yes, I was about to say. We reviewed the curriculum. Dr. Cullis gave us a rundown of the curriculum. We, as a committee, thought that was all fine.
Is the, sorry, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but to go back to the mentor-mentee thing, is this the, is this what the Orton-Gillingham training is, is for, or is that for something else?
This, this is, anytime a teacher is new to teaching, fresh out of school, you go alternate route, you change your career, your first year teaching in any district, it's not special to Denville, you get assigned a mentor. And, as they were saying, traditionally, the mentee, who happens to be your lowest-paid, lowest rung, and it's not inexpensive, I think it's, it was at least $500, right? Yeah, so, I mean, pays to have someone guide them through, you know, whenever they have a question, they're their go-to person to help them if they're having a problem with anything.
And they have some formal meetings where they meet, they meet...
And there's definitely formal things they have to do.
They're also a resource as well, if you just kind of ask them as necessary.
Right, and then, as I alluded to earlier, there's also, and I guess we don't have any, if you're just new to our district but not new to teaching under, I think the Teach-N-J Act or whatever, we had to then also have mentors for them, and that's sort of more on climate and culture in the building, how things are done here. You know how to teach, but you may not know, and you get assigned a mentor and that, too, but there is not usually a cost involved with that, because it's not as much time put out. But you get, like, a buddy, I think they were called at one point, a buddy in the building, who knew that this is what happens on Olympic Day, and this is what happens when the kids do this, and this is what happens on that day, and, you know, they, they tell you about the climate and culture in the building, you're...
And, and we discussed it, committee, Dr. Cullis, you know, there, there's some thoughts and some, some thinking about expanding kind of the use of the, of this relationship to be able to do other things as well, so she's looking at that as well.
Good. Did that actually answer your question?
I, I think so, thank you.
Because I'll just keep talking.
I did want to mention that I actually went on and saw, went on to YouTube, I guess, Matt, what's his last name, Steve again? Belachi?
Oh, yes.
Pretty good. If you guys haven't seen him, he's, uh, he was pretty interesting. I spent about five minutes just checking him out, making sure we weren't approving some, uh, some inappropriate material.
Is it Ricky? Does he have a book?
If there's nothing else, let's go ahead and vote on this. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay, moving on to policy. Mr. Anderson, would you care to take us through our policy item tonight?
I would love to. If there are no objections, I'd like to move number one. It is second reading adoption for acceptable use of computer networks, computers, and resources policy and regulation 2361.
Second.
So, this is second reading. We've talked about this in committee, and in technology, I don't think there was nothing, I don't think there's anything new there.
This policy is the one that we just had the changes put into?
The...
Or this isn't the one?
No, this is not that one.
This is not the one with all the highlights that we just got? Okay. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it is. It's the one Steve sent it to us, and you, you added the verbiage that we had the long discussion about at the last meeting.
You wanted learning about the open tabs, that's all it...
The open tabs.
Yeah, I, I really, when I read it, I felt like it really did clarify. I got what the discussion was. I stated openly at the last meeting...
I'm sorry, I, I thought this was older than that. Yeah, you're right, yeah.
I stated at the last meeting, when I read it, I didn't understand that whole discussion that had happened in committee that I knew nothing about. But when I read it this time, I had an understanding. So, I thank whoever put in the new verbiage. It really did clear it up for me.
Mr. Luer suggested most of that.
Well, I, I think it achieved what you were hoping for.
I'm, I'm glad, I still think the public needs to be aware that, that stuff is being tracked. I, I am comfortable with the way the policy is written now, but people who, people need to be aware that, of who, of who is keeping track of what's going on in their home computers, assuming that you use school resources.
I, I agree. I agree last meeting, and I, I think the new wording helps us understand.
I think we came out the right end of this. Anyone else? Not, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Before you move on to finance, if I could just say one thing, Mike, to Mike's comment about he went on and saw a few minutes of, say it again, Matt?
Belachi.
Belachi. I don't know why I can't say his name. I actually own two copies of his book, and saw him speak when he last spoke here at Valleyview several years ago, and he was very entertaining. As they say, he is a comedian, a this, a that.
Yeah.
The book is amazing. He was entertaining, and yet I learned a ton.
What's the book?
And I actually, it's A Better High: Laugh, Help, Run, Love, and Other Ways to Get Naturally High. I actually reference it and tell people about it all the time. So, he's a wonderful speaker, so I'm excited to have him back in the district. And I'm sorry, I did not make the connection until right now.
On to finance. Mrs. Deluna, would you care to move to finance?
Sure. If there's no objection, I'd like to move items one through 12, it's listed on your agenda as a block, summarizing. One is the checklist. Two is received donation of $100 from Ms. Springer, a retired Lakeview teacher, for ESL classroom supplies. The elevator maintenance agreement, non-public nursing textbook and technology monies for St. Mary's. Number five, New Jersey School Board Insurance, basic and supplemental workers' comp insurance for next year. The semi, participating in the semi-initiative, oh, okay, and then further resolve that we're using a public consulting group to help with that. Seven, submission of comprehensive maintenance plan. Eight, tuition, tuition costs for the school year. Number nine, PG chambers, clinical therapy services.
Thank you.
Ten, disposing of a computer rack. Eleven, speech services, and twelve, behavioral support. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
As always, we like to always recognize donations, and so that's always appreciated from Mrs. Springer.
So, just to point it out, number three is an example of what I talked about earlier. For $215 per month for a one-year maintenance agreement, I'm sure we have a bunch of maintenance agreements that don't come through as a motion. I'm assuming we have a boatload of maintenance agreements on all sorts of, whether it's, you know, agreements for HVAC or whatever, but this one shows up, so I'm not really sure why this one's on there and others aren't. So, those are the type of things that I'm not sure of, unless there's...
This is an, an annual agreement that, for the elevator at Valleyview. Valleyview's the only school that has the elevator, and they just, by procedure, just send us a, a contract, formal contract every year, so we just approve the contract.
But are, I guess, are there other contracts like that that don't make it on here for one reason or another?
I'm fixed.
I guess, what's the criteria? I guess, I guess we're asking, what criteria makes it rise to that?
If it's a formal contract, I'll put it in. This, this specific motion was on, in the agenda last, last year, and I kept, I want to be consistent from last year's agenda and approve the contract.
Okay, as a district, I mean, are there, there aren't service agreements, there aren't gonna be formal contracts, though, right? I mean, they, they pretty much all are gonna be.
True. They just renew itself without a formal contract.
Without resigning.
Correct.
But it's a, it's, once you don't say you want out of it, it's a legal renewal of an agreement that might've been in place five years ago. So, to me, I don't really see the legal difference on this, that they send us a copy every year versus you didn't cancel, you didn't cancel your pest control contract that's for, you know, the, the school or whatever.
I would almost say, not to sort of change the subject, but from an oversight, the discussion we were having earlier, our job is oversight. One of the things that, when Steve came to the district, that he found out that as a board, we had let lapse certain contracts that really, in the end, cost us a lot of money, and to a board member, none of us knew we had let lapse. So, as an oversight and an accountability piece, I would love to actually see a list of them and have the board know that if we don't see them on there, we should be asking why? Do we now have a person in-house that can do the required maintenance? Because they were things that, as an oversight, I feel like I fell down on the job, not knowing that we stopped doing it, and, I mean, one of them is an HVAC thing. I think it ended up costing us a ton of money, because we weren't doing yearly maintenance on them. So, I'm not sure how many of these we have that we don't approve, because I recall seeing them, but when it didn't show up, I didn't recall that it wasn't, because they don't all come at once, and it's not like a list, and, you know...
A lot of these contracts I also approved in the reorg agenda, and some of them could be missed, and they, we approved them later on on a different agenda.
There's, there's probably a lot that we don't do. I mean, I think about software, you know, all the software things that we...
Yeah, you're right. I've never seen a software...
Well, and that's some, and, and along Mariana's point, maybe we can bring that up on one of the B&amp;G committee meetings, where we sit down and just look at the maintenance agreements that we have in place, so we, is there anything we're missing, or, I mean, it also gives an idea of, of cost perspective on what we're spending on those types of things. I've asked for it on technology. I know I've mentioned in the past that I'd love to see a listing of all the different software. I mean, I feel like every time I look at the bills list, I'm like, there's another $5,000 going out to a software company we work with, and, and really an evaluation on, are we using them? I know you guys have gone through them and eliminated some that we just say we don't use anymore. I think Study Island might've been one of them or something. So, but I, I see a lot of money go out on those. Is there any room for efficiency on there, just as an oversight, like Mariana said, so maybe that's...
I do believe that at the budget time, they're listed individually, each one. Like, in other words, every, every software that we have is on there, like, and how much it is, and whether or not, and then, and then if it's not on there, we didn't renew it, you know, something like that. But we've always showed you, because it'll show it the year before. Say, like, Study Island, 15, 16, and how much? 16, 17, zero. So, I mean, I guess we could assume that that means it's gone. Or at least it, it should trigger a question, if there's a question from the board about that.
But that, that's the point, so we approve it on the budget. I'm sure we, this was probably a budgeted item, right, I would assume?
Yes.
So, where's that line on what we put as a motion for, you know, so that, it's just something, it's not that we're gonna solve today.
Well, yeah, this is a case in point to what you were talking about, so it's easy to understand.
So, anyway, the other question I had was on 11 and 12, why are those agreements so short?
That's special ed. You probably know.
That one is a specific, okay, okay, so, the first one, hold on a second.
It's a very specific...
12 is very easy. 12 is easy, it's because, remember we talked about before, people have to give 60 days notice? That teacher came on the district, and her 60 days would end on September 20th, so we needed something in the interim.
Okay.
In other words, her first day is, say, September 21st.
Okay, got it.
The other one is, is something, a specific thing for a child that needed that service. It's not necessarily, you know, it's not a bad thing or a good thing, it's just we needed that service for that kid. And I don't know why it's not, why it's that length of time. I can find out for you.
Yeah. Yeah, if you can, I mean, I'm not gonna, not gonna hold it up, but if you could just find out why it's...
Why, yeah, that's...
I'm, I'm sure there's gotta be a reason why it's a very specific date.
I'm sure there's a need behind it.
Speech therapy, you just reevaluate to see if you need to, like a doctor, right?
It could be that the IEP is up in middle of November or something like that, so... Yeah. Okay.
Any, any other items?
And I'm sorry, Corv, I don't remember if you said it when you moved to, motion seven, the comprehensive maintenance plan, is that something you guys talked about in the committee?
The comprehensive maintenance plans, we approve them every year. We have to submit it to the county by September, by the middle of September. It's basically the, the square footage, how much we spend per square footage district-wide. Every school, building, board office, garage, is a form that we fill out on a yearly basis and get it approved and send it to the county.
And just for clarification to the public, number four, that's money that is not ours, correct? That's St. Mary's school money that just passes through the district because we're the closest district to...
Because we are the public school district, and we are the school district in charge.
So it's not our money, but we are...
We are custodian of it.
We're not allowed to give money directly to a parochial school.
Right, so it passes through us.
But partly we can.
Yeah.
You give it to us, we can give it to them.
That's a distinction, yeah, it's a distinction without, without a...
Plausible deniability.
Okay. If there's nothing else, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Delora?
Yes.
Ms. Delora?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want to abstain from the check?
Oh, thank you. I'm so sorry. I need to abstain.
Nice catch, Dave.
Thank you. On motion one, on checks number 1118 and 1079.
Did you repeat that?
1118 and 1079.
Thank you.
I got so involved in looking up the elevator contract I had.
Okay. Buildings and grounds, since Mr. Cass isn't here. Would you care to move Mr. Anderson?
Sure. Long pause. If there are no objections, I'd like to move items one and two under buildings and grounds, submission to the county superintendent for renewal of temporary instructional space at Lakeview, and the approval of the lease of the use of Valley View Middle School for 2016-17 for Think World to provide an aftercare enrichment program.
Think Work.
Think Work, sorry.
Second. Since I'm not on the committee that discussed this, how does this work with our...
Existing lease.
Our existing after-school programs at Valley View? It's not like we don't have, we don't have something all five days of the week, is that...
We don't have an after-care type program at Valley View.
No, we, we do not.
We, we have the ability to have it, but we just never got off the ground with, with the why. And at a few, on a few occasions, a few parents asked, as a matter of fact, I think you guys might have been one of the parents that asked me, you were standing right there maybe, about some type of a program for middle school kids after school. And it was just something I started looking into a little bit, and Mark Faschian is a town guy, he runs a couple other programs, and he was interested in running this program for our students that would be, it can be flexible, meaning like if you, if you have a sixth grader, you don't want him home because you don't get home from work at six until six, they could even go to the club until 3:30 and then go 3:30 to six there. Or it could just be somebody who wants the academic kind of side of it for an hour, and then they get picked up. So we're gonna be very flexible with it, it's gonna be, it's something new, and it'll probably be targeted more towards the sixth grade due to the fact that, I think, when the kids get a little older in the middle of school, the parent's a little more comfortable with them coming home on their own, but they're still a little hesitant when they're in sixth grade. And it's a, it's like a bridge, kind of, because we also don't run anything on Mondays, and very often on Fridays.
Okay, so I didn't, I didn't know how it would, you know, take away from, or lower the count of, or whatever.
I mean, it could, it could impact some of the clubs, maybe, but I think the fact that he's allowing the kids to go to the clubs and then come to him...
Well, and that's how the program works, at least after school at Lakeview, I'm not familiar with it in Riverview, but it is.
It should have a minimal impact on it. We also don't expect to have more than, you know, we're thinking somewhere in the five to 10 kids range.
Okay, I was gonna say, and that might be realistic. I, I realize that the demographic in town changes. In my time on the board, we have started one, and I think one person signed up.
Yeah.
So it's worth, like you said, if he's willing to take the chance and see who signs up, that's fine. We may now have a need for it more so than we did seven years ago when we tried it the last time.
And the arrangement I made with him was he'll, he'll commit to a quarter, and he's gonna pay us rent for the quarter. I told him at the end of the quarter, if you're not satisfied, or it's not got off the ground, then you're not on hold for the whole $14,000 for the full year. I felt like that was a fair arrangement for us.
That's fair.
We discussed the temporary instructional space at Lakeview. We're, I think that we had to, to make that work, if I remember correctly, we had to move, was it music?
That's what I read somewhere, music back...
Back into the trailer. One of the things that we mentioned just in passing was if Riverview had more space, we would be able to have more kids at Riverview. Is there, I don't, I don't know when the last time we, we, like, we as in the board or the district looked at this, but what, are there any possibilities of adding either horizontally or vertically onto Riverview as a, not like a, hey, let's do this now, but like a, is it, is it even physically possible? Is the building capable of being added on to, like, maybe complete the second floor or something like that? I don't know enough about it.
I can tell you, I can tell you what I've been told by our buildings department, I haven't had this confirmed by an architect, but our buildings and grounds department has told us that in the past, they have looked into that, and that it is feasible to go over the, the one closest to the large parking lot, that, that wing there that goes over there.
In my time on the board, we have paid architects to look at it. When we were going out for a referendum about a new building, we looked at that, and I don't trust my recollection, but my recollection was you would have to build around it, it can't structurally support it, so you'd have to build the building around and then above it.
Yeah, like a...
Support itself.
Right.
It would have to be self-supporting.
So it would have to go out over, right?
Yes, put your pilings around it and build on those.
That was before we put the new roof on, too.
We don't like that answer, we'll just get new architect.
Hey, we, we didn't do anything with that answer, so we obviously didn't like it then either, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
By the way, I thought that in the LRFP, there was the potential suggestion to go up at Riverview.
There was, there was a line.
But they didn't actually look at the building, they just...
No, there were...
The architect was out there.
Yeah.
I don't know if he brought a structural engineer to, because that would have cost a decent amount of money, but he gave us this as an option.
The way I remember it being phrased was it was a viable option, it would be the most viable way of doing something there, is what I remember reading it.
It may not be cost-effective, but it's viable.
No, it's possible.
Viable, we just get rid of that building and add a two-story.
If we knocked it down and started from scratch, it might cost us...
Okay.
Sorry.
Is there nothing else now?
No.
We got all night.
Now we don't, and we do not have a line. Roll call, please.
Apparently we're taken over.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Ms. Delora?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Transportation. If there are no objections, I would like to move that we approve the bus routes for the 2016-2017 school year.
Second.
Mr. Anderson?
I don't recall seeing this as an attachment. Was that something that was, that was sent and I missed it somehow?
Damaris sent it as a drive.
It's a Google share, but I sent it to the finance committee. It's a big file, a Google shared file.
We can't pass something.
Oh, it wasn't sent to all...
It wasn't sent to the whole board?
No, just to the finance committee. Makes it hard to vote on.
Yes. That's problematic.
Take a look at the, take a look at the, Damaris, is the entire, is that synopsis in here for the board?
I have it in my finance committee.
So summary's not in there?
No.
Okay, so...
Seventeen bus routes.
Yeah. That was just, that's, that's, that was a draft.
That's the draft, because I saw the draft, you guys sent the draft, everybody.
I mean, we, yeah, we can share it with you right now, actually. You all have Chromebooks up, right?
Yep.
Okay. We're gonna take a brief commercial interruption while we review the bus routes.
You guys can share, this is a little summary from Dan.
This is gonna happen to me, I haven't seen it, so I don't have the sharing option. This is not mine. Mrs. Whitty, you're a trooper tonight.
I wonder now or never.
I think the committee, and I think the committee can speak to the board about it, discuss the changes that were made. Even the fact that I didn't create the document does not allow me to share the document with you. So even if I did share it with you, the, the size of the document that we're talking about would, would take a long time to review. But there's a synopsis that's not too long, and I think the, the committee, the committee backed the, I know Mrs. Deluna was, is the chairperson of the operations overall, but not of the transportation, which is Mr. Cass, but we could have the committee explain the changes that are fairly minimal. Or Maris can, or I can, whatever board of the board thinks is better.
I, I gave Mariana and Mr. Delor a summary page.
But why don't you discuss with us what happened?
Yeah, why don't you take us through it?
What happened?
Well, what, what the changes are, what, what, what you're asking us to vote on.
Right, so the, so the amount of change, so what we asked Dan to do was to give a summary of the number of stops per school 15-16 compared to number of stops per school 16-17. So Valley View AM will go from 185 to 172, PM will go from 177 to 174. Lakeview will go from 186 AM to 180 PM, and, I'm, I'm sorry, 180 AM, and Lakeview will go from 168 PM to 150 PM. Riverview goes from 96 AM to 90 P, 90 AM, and 102 PM to 92 PM. This also will have all, all bus drivers and buses will, and, and stops will be the same AM and PM. That, that's, that's for the most part. There are some ones that, that doesn't work, but for the most part, the driver will be the same, the stop will be the same, and the bus will be the same, AM and PM. The mega stops, mega stops, we defined as any, any stops with more than 20 or more students. Currently in 15, well, in 15-16, we had 12, in, in 16-17, we're gonna have 10. And this, this will allow us to use seven less buses at Riverview, which will be a savings in wear and tear and gas on the bus. Last year, all the buses went to Riverview, even though, like, in other words, the same number of buses did Lakeview and Riverview, even though it's almost half the size school. So one of the things we charged him with was not, basically not doing that anymore, and eliminating some of the buses at Riverview if they're not needed. So that's the, that's the synopsis in a nutshell of how the things were, the way he decided on the bus routes, I can tell you, on the stops was, there, anytime there was a safety concern, the stop was saved no matter what. And he was really looking at eliminating some of the stops that had been added on over the last 10 years by people requesting something, and then we just, we just, we just took the request and then continued it. So he's eliminating it, made it a little bit more efficient, hasn't, hasn't cut the amount of bus stops even close to what we were originally saying, and still we substantially reduced the number of bus stops last year. This is a more modest reduction in bus stops, but there's, you know, we're really keeping it fairly close to what it was.
Do we have any feel for what this does in terms of times, like start times and, start times and pickups, in terms of the earliest times, the latest times? Is it, is it any indication of that yet?
No. As of now, though, as of right now, we are not, we are, we are, you know, said, we're sticking to the schedule that it is, so it's, you know, the schools are gonna start 7:30, 8:00, 8:30, basically.
I'm more thinking about, like, what's the earliest time a kid gets on the bus for the school, you know, Valley View, you know, yeah, I'm thinking more in that lines. And the answer, maybe you don't know for sure yet, I'm just wondering where we're...
Well, we did charge him with making, making some headway into that and not having a 6:30 stop. And I don't have that answer off the top of my head. I may be able to find it for you. Let me see.
Well, no, I haven't, no, he can't, he couldn't share it with us, so I didn't see it.
I can find that answer out for you guys.
Obviously wrong.
I will share that with you as what's the earliest time for each school. Does that make sense?
I'd like to know.
How is this affecting the, the bus drivers? Are there going to be people who are going from full-time to part-time or anything like that?
No, not at this point. But we used to have, we used to have all the buses traveling through Riverview just using gas and tires and things. It didn't make sense when you didn't need them, there were five kids on a bus, so we're gonna reduce the amount of buses going to Riverview.
I got that.
So some of those drivers, though, will be working last night.
Well, we have some that work part-time already, not at halftime. I'm not quite sure how we did it, they, they had some night-afternoon people. I know we're short bus drivers, and we're still trying to hire some for certain routes, so. Remember also, the practice was if you, you could choose your AM and PM route differently, meaning I could, I want this route AM, I don't want this route PM by school. So now it's a package deal, whatever you get AM, you get PM.
Well, and I'm pleased to see that, that we are signing within that asterisk, that not all of this is, you know, for all of them, the same bus driver and stops to match AM and PM. And this is not specific to the changes we made this year, but how can we say the stops match AM and PM when we have a different amount of stops in the AM and PM? I mean, at Lakeview...
For the most part.
You have 180 in the morning and you have 150 in the afternoon. Where did the 30?
It does have to do with...
Daycare. Some of the daycare, they don't always stop, they don't, you know, they'll drop off, they might not pick up.
This is a sample of Valley View in the morning.
But how do we know that right now? All the parents tell you?
That's all...
Yes, these are, these are, these are basically people who use the daycare before and after school instead of like a kids' club. So like little learners, for instance, right? They, they, we have a stop there, they pick up kids, and then they drop kids off at the end of the day, there.
Yeah.
So we have 30 of those stops at Lakeview that we know don't need to exist?
Well, there's also, there's also the fact that you have your different, your, some of your pre-k's at Lakeview and at a different time, those kids are bused differently, so it does impact the schedule.
Okay. I, I mean, and at Valley View, some, in the afternoon, we run more stops than the morning?
Say again?
At Valley View, we're gonna run two more stops in the afternoon.
There's two more stops, there's two, yeah. It's just a different number.
You mean there's, it's, there's 177, 174 at Valley View?
Well, no, the way I'm reading it says Valley View AM 172, PM 174, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what you just said.
Yeah, 172 versus 174.
I mean, I see that traditionally, they have never matched up. At least last year, they didn't match up either.
Well, one example, I can think of is the eighth grade CCD, I think maybe that's an extra stop or something.
Okay.
And so much, it's so...
I don't need to get into the weeds, it just seems odd to me that you have buses that kids come to school and they don't go back.
Even though it's not exact, like, it's, it's, there's a difference, but it was way different last year, it wasn't close.
Well, and by the way, so I'm looking back at the routes from last year, there's actually a bus on here that has a bus stop that has zero count, that counted as a stop.
Yeah.
So I'm not even sure if we can rely on the numbers we're looking at from last year, because that counted as a stop at 6:42 AM.
Okay, so we could get rid of that one easily.
The bus stopped at 8:82 Miller Road, it's at 6:42, no children going on, because nobody was supposed to get on, but it kept going after that, so I'm not sure.
You also have, they kept, the stops at the bus garage count as stops, the stops at the school counts, everything counts as a stop.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So it looks like, very, very quickly I looked, it looks like 6:40, it looks like about a four or five minute difference so far, what I can see on some of the early ones.
Well, are we communicating? Well, I guess the parents will know when they get their bus assignment on Genesis, the pickup time.
This week, yeah.
On the 17th.
And that's how the time change will be communicated, because everybody gets a bus stop time.
It's on the 17th it opens, right? The 17th.
This week, right, I mean, after, after tonight, it'll go out. it'll go out.
So the committee was all, the committee was good with all of this?
Yes.
You guys are recommending it?
Yep.
Okay. In that case, roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Ms. Deluer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsay?
Yes, based on the committee's recommendation.
Mr. Capello?
Yes, on the same basis. Okay. That concluding all the normal business, we are on to good to the cause. Any committee reports we didn't cover after the course of the agenda? I had the, any other discussion items? We have lead testing reimbursement on here?
Yeah, so, you want me to, I don't know, hold over to the next meeting?
Well, I'll put it out there as something to think about, so we can discuss it at the next meeting. Something I brought up to Dino was that, you know, the state has come out with the lead testing requirements. The legislator, legislation has passed, and then the State Board of Ed gave an interpretation on that bill, which the State Board of Ed's determination or interpretation of that basically means that there is no retroactive reimbursement for districts that were proactive and did the right thing for the safety of the students, like us, and tested water prior to the date of the, of the bill. So I'm pretty upset about it, because I think it really is unfair for districts that, like I said, did the right thing. So if you waited and allowed the kids to get exposed to lead water for even longer, you would have gotten reimbursement and been paid back for it. But since you did it ahead of time, sorry. You'll still get counted for it, meaning that you don't have to do it again, but we're not gonna pay you back for it. New Jersey School Board's interpretation of this, just so you know, is that they fought to have it retroactive, and they said that it's really a matter of how the State Board of Ed is interpreting the actual bill. So I don't know if you have any other
No, no, I spoke to Chris Jones about it. We also had the meeting August 4th with Assemblyman Buco and Representative Carroll, and mentioned this as well. You know, their take on it was similar, was that they, you know, it was an understanding, there was an intention there, that districts like ours probably should be reimbursed, but the Department of Education basically wrote the regulation in a way that prohibits that. So that's where we're at right now. Mike and I had talked about sending a letter to the Department of Education on the behalf of the board. We wanted to discuss that, see if that was something we wanted, we wanted to do.
I don't know if we need to have a
I see no harm in doing it. I'm not gonna hold my breath for, you know, a different hour.
We might be tilting at windmills, but I think it's worth
There's, there's no, yeah, there's, I'm happy to charge my board president with doing so.
We'll call you Dino Quixote.
I'm happy to do it. I think it's worthwhile. You know, it's a, it's unfair, and, you know, not the broad sense, it just is unfair, so.
It's basically penalizing people that did the right thing.
Well, or you could look at it as providing funds for districts that couldn't, so that they can do the right thing. So that all the kids in the state of New Jersey
You're talking about the districts that have the high state aid?
You did the right thing. You did the rest, sure.
Right, so I think we're on the side.
We did the right thing.
We did the right thing, so.
We made sure our students are no longer drinking tainted water.
So we will, we will put a letter together and send it for everybody to take a, take a look at before we, before we send it on. And just to finish on that, we had, you know, it was very good productive meetings with both representatives. We talked a lot about unfunded and, you know, underfunded mandates and the ridiculousness of those, especially when a mandate is funded by, you know, what is clearly not the right amount of money, the appropriate amount of money. They recognize that, you know, they say they're gonna continue to advocate for us on those, on those matters. We talked about, obviously, testing and the, you know, mandates, including testing, you know, park testing and all the things that went into getting that off the ground. Yeah, they, they recognize all of these things there, and I think, I think, well, Senator Buco, he was a school board member. I'm not sure about, Representative Pennell, if he was or not, but, you know, they, they sat on the side of the table at one time or another, too, so I think they, they take a lot of what we were talking about to heart. So these were good meetings.
Good.
Thank you for doing that. I did want to mention that the foundation of Denville's golf outing is September 19th, so the next time we meet, it'll be one week before it, so they would very much appreciate anybody who can round up some sponsors, or golfers, or donations for, for any tricky tray items. I know this is their biggest fundraiser, fundraiser of the year, for those who you don't know. If you haven't been, it's a great time. You don't have to be a great golfer, trust me, but you'll have fun. You could also just go to the dinner.
Yes.
You can
I can recommend that.
Go on their website and check it out. I think I sent over some information. It's, it's really, really, it's a great night, so.
And you said it was the 20th?
The 19th.
The 19th.
19th. It's Monday, the 19th. It's right between our meetings in September.
And they're doing it again at Rockaway River?
Rockaway River, yes, which is a great course, by the way.
And I know Mr. Cass sent something out to all the board members, and I think, Dave, did you want to mention about the playground, the Project 2.0 playground? Yes. Project coming up this weekend? The Playground 2.0 project is the, sorry, I think it's Project Playground 2.0 is an effort to raise money to replace the Gardner Field Playground Equipment Central in the town. Everyone in town, almost everyone in town plays on it. Everyone is aware of it. They are, we are doing a, we're doing a big fundraiser. Most of the sports in town are going to be there this Saturday. I think it starts at 10, but people are gonna be there setting up at 8. There are, there's, I think, eight stations for, run by various sports, various activities in town. Basically, you're, you use, I think it's 12.50 for, 12 bucks for a wristband, family maximum of 45, and you get to go around and do all the activities at each, you do each activity, and at the end, I think, there's prizes and/or gifts, prizes and/or certificates. I should probably be more certain about this, considering my wife is running this event. But please, everybody come out. There's going to be lots of kids, lots of fun, and lots of sports games and other activities.
Sounds great.
Thank you. I'd also like to mention that the River View PTA Bowling League is looking for bowlers. The reason it's called the River View PTA Bowling League is because it was started by the River View PTA 42 years ago, but at this point, I think my wife is the only person who is still in the River View PTA who is bowling, because it's mostly the people who started it. They are looking for new bowlers. Do not have to be a member of River View PTA, do not have to be a member, do not have to have kids in the school. This is, at this point, mainly a league that donates to, that donates to the school at the end of the year. So they're looking for people, and anybody who is interested, we will, we will be able to get you information about that. Great. Thank you very much.
Most of the bowlers have been bowling for 42 years?
Not all of them. One of them, one of the bowlers was actually my second grade teacher when I was at Main Street. And my mother-in-law has been bowling for 41 of those years. So there are, in fact, a lot of people, I think the average age in the bowling league is in the upper 60s. So there's, there's a lot of people who have been doing this for a very long time, and there's lots of people who, who benefit from it.
Great.
Yeah. If there's nothing else, I am gonna open up for our second public comment section at 10:53 PM.
I'm trying to sit here, is it coming up here, right? I just, on the playground, the Fox Hill Playground.
You gotta, yeah, just, for the record.
Oh, thanks. Eleven Shawnee Trail. Anyway, the Fox Hill Playground, right on Fox Hill Road there by the Motec, they're built, they're going to be building their playground on August 27, and they're gonna start at 7 o'clock in the morning. And so any help, if anybody can fill out, it's all being filled by volunteers. But they raised the money, they bought all the equipment, it's all
Is there anyone else they can reach out, reach out to in terms of connecting to?
They could contact the mayor, and he could get their names on the list.
All right, thank you.
Would you show up?
Would you show up? Okay, well, that's good. Oh, I have flyers for the, for the sports thing, for the sports activity thing on Saturday, if anybody wants one. And I know it's on Facebook, it's been posted on Facebook as well, so. Yes.
What a great way to get the word out.
Denvillplays.com is the website. All right. If there's nothing else, I'll close for public comment at 10:54 PM, and open up for any last board comments. Seeing none, we don't, we don't have need for executive session.
Move adjourned.
So I'll take a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Mr. Deluer. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All in favor?
Yay!
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Our meeting is closed at 10:54 PM. Thank you very much, everybody.